Thompson.
It's just one, it's a follow-on question really, but at the moment, I'm sorry, under the system as proposed, if you have a major fire wherever, the principal fire officer will say, well, we need to bring resources in from other places where they're based, and get on the phone and say, get here as quick as you can, correct? Under the current system, if you have a major fire somewhere, the presumably the local fire officer does something pretty similar, rings up his colleagues and says, I need help and I need it as quickly as you can, correct?
That has happened.
So, I suppose I'm wondering what's different, and it would help me to understand what's different if you could tell me or give me examples of where that's gone wrong? Where have there been examples where fires have not been dealt to as quickly as they would have been, either through intransigence by another authority, or slowness to act by another authority?
I can't think of specific examples there, councillor Thompson, but the example you gave of if there's a large fire, about pooling resources, well, that happened with the Berwick Fire, the Wunyda Fire. Now, people did turn up and share resources. Under this new model, you would certainly know around the district who was trained to turn up at their fire, where they are, that they are currently trained, what certificates they've gathered, and I think you would receive a gang of men and women who are better prepared to respond to those sorts of fires. When something goes wrong, people get on the machines, put on the overalls and go. We'd like to see improved training as part of that mix.
Graham, would you like to address that question?
To councillor Thompson. The question was, do we have problems with responding to large fires and how we get those resources? So, you may be aware that we've had a few big fires over the last three or four years. We have no problems getting men on the ground, i.e. grunt people, firefighters, we have problems getting incident management team people, so that's the people that actually help run the fires, firefighters themselves, volunteers, plenty of. It's that upper level where we're struggling at the moment, so it puts a lot of pressure on a PRFO like myself to carry out three or four tasks. I might be doing the planning, I might be the incident controller, I might be the operations manager. So what happens from that is that sometimes the fires may not go as I'd like them to go, because I'm doing three roles at once. Within a large rural fire district, it would be much easier to get hold of the incident management team to help out these large fires. We have arrangements, what we call a RIMD, which is a regional incident management team, and slowly we're starting to get that level trained up, so they can help us assist. With the enlarged rural fire district, that process will be much quicker, and we have more funding for that level of training. The little fires are easy, it's the big, complex ones that are the difficult ones, and it all comes, so, that's the management level, so that's where the advantages of an enlarged rural fire district will help out the lives of PRFOs. And it'll be more efficient and more cost-effective.
Thank you, that's a very helpful answer. Councillor Bezette.
I think it's a question from Mr Avery. Tony, with the, I'm looking at the resolutions, and we've got a choice of going to consultation or not. If we don't go to consultation, are you satisfied, are you also listening to me, Tony? Are you satisfied that the consultation process will be as robust as we would if we were undertaking it, if the fire authority were doing it?
There's no reason why it won't be as robust, it's a standard process. I suppose if the council wanted to, I suppose it is a question that was raised by councillor Wilson about whether we might have some meetings or sessions during that consultation process, and I don't know that would be a problem for us, would it? So if that assisted in terms of the understanding, then that's something we could commit to as well, as part of the NRFA process. We have noted that if we, if you go for option 2B, that does put some problems in the way of the timeframe proposing. The NRFA process, if we threw in some additional meetings in our space, may assist in that and would ensure that people understood what was being consulted on, and allow them to submit on an informed basis.
Councillor Van de Wiss.
I'd like to move the recommendations on eighteen point two, number one, and number two A.
I'm conscious that there might be a couple more questions, and then I'll, can I come back to you? Because I also think we need to address, and your motion may, the implications of the two different forms of consultation, so. Councillor Butcher, do you have another question?
Oh, well, that's fine, I was just going to move one and two B.
Right. So, can I preface, your motion comes first councillor Van de Wiss, but can I just preface that by asking the difference in implications between the two forms of consultation, because I think that's critical too, and then we'll come to your motion councillor Van de Wiss.
Can I just further clarification, which could be sought at the same time? It's just a little unclear to me because of something else that's written in the report, which says if we endorse the proposal, then effectively we can't change our mind on that, and it's not clear to me whether one, as it's worded, isn't, I know it says in principle, but is that in effect endorsing the proposal, which would mean that regardless of which form of consultation we entered into, it wouldn't make any difference?
It's a good question. I suppose the two B option, where you've endorsed it in principle but consulted, does reserve, I suppose, one final point where you can consider the consultation, decide whether you want to go ahead with it or not. If you go for two A, as I understand it, the process from that point would be an NRFA decision, so the council's effectively saying if you go with two A, that you are happy that it proceeds on that consultation process, knowing that it wouldn't come back to council. That's right, but I'm...
I mean, I accept that one and two A logically sit together, I'm just really querying whether one and two B logically sit together, or where if you were, for example, of a mind to support two B and therefore vote against councillor Van de Wiss's motion, you would be, you know, somewhat Don Quixote-like, charging into a consultation process that would make no difference whatsoever because of one.
The, I suppose in terms of going out to consult with the community, consultation processes like this are easy if the council has adopted a position, that is then for consultation rather than an open-ended proposal. You could make that choice if you wanted to.
Is this a question?
Okay, so if we do that then, does that, that's what it means? I thought if we had to, when we consult, we have to go out with, this is what we're thinking now, what do you think, before we actually make up the final decision? That's the way I read endorsing, I'm going for one and then B.
So your one might just add plus on the end of one for the purposes of consultation?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it clears it up, councillor Thompson, I think.
Well, it says quite clearly, I'll just clarify here, perhaps you can give us a timeline to clarify this, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're not talking across purposes here a little, about what our understanding of the implications of the recommendations are and their relationship to each other, so if you could give us a timeline for each of the options two A and B, and then you could go back to the implication of one on each of them.
Just on the timeline under two A, Witten Eden is the fourth council to consider this proposal, Queenstown is to consider on the eighth of October. If all authorities had agreed to support the amalgamation, then pretty quickly thereafter, Mr Duffield here would go about the gazeteau and that submission or engagement process. We'd see that largely being taken care of by mid-December at the latest, hearings, submissions and hearings, and then final position. That would then allow us to get into the real nuts and bolts of putting this in place in the new year, recruiting the PRFO, and getting this all set up for one July two thousand and fourteen. This would also tie nicely with our annual planning process for TAs. Now, go-live date one July two thousand and fourteen is also seen as appropriate, so that we can be up and running in the winter, giving us two or three months ahead of the fire season. Option B will essentially puts another step in the process, and I'd imagine it's going to take at least sixty days to get through the local government statement, proposal, submission process for that, so it'll push us out two months, sixty days. I think it pushes us beyond a realistic go-live date of one July two thousand and fourteen, and pushes us too close to the next fire season, and so I actually think two B would put us out another year, which concerns me, given the time we've spent on this already. March two thousand and ten, we've been talking about this for quite some time around various levels, and I'm just, I understand what you're concerned, but I'm concerned that it would put us into another financial year.
Right, well, the, I take your point, but the fact is that it has only come to this council now, and it has only come to this council in a form which we could consider now, and we will, we are bound to do it in a timeline that is in the best interests of this council. So can I now ask, and I think this is where you're coming from councillor Thompson, going back to the implication of one with regard to two A and B, assume that if we endorse in principle, it makes no, in a sense, we're not, we're no more committed, or are we more committed, by choosing one consultation measure rather than the other? And Tony, what?
The, there is a subtlety in terms of the two consultation processes, because under two B, that would run a process that would be coming back to, I think we're targeting a November council meeting, which would be the new council, and I think Phil mentioned a two-month delay, I think it would be longer than that, because the council made a decision in November kicking off then the NRFA process over December, January, that sort of shutdown period might be an issue for us, I think probably longer than two months. But that two B would reserve, I suppose, to this council its final decision around whether it did want to become part of the enlarged rural fire district until at least November of this year. If you go for two A, and as noted in the report, you'd effectively be committing to the enlarged rural fire district subject to the NRFA consultation process, but that process doesn't provide for, as far as I can tell, Murray can comment on this, a reporting back to the council or the councils for another consideration of the outcome of that submission process.
Right, so that's clear, but, and I'll come to your motion very shortly councillor Van de Wiss, that's clear that the implication of choosing A is that we commit now and the process goes into someone else's hands to some extent. If we go with two B, the implication is that it comes back to us, but it takes longer and is a problem for maybe the other partners. Councillor Van de Wiss, you're moving one and two A, is there a second?
What's a suggested slight modification from councillor Stevenson, and that is that after endorses the principle, we put for the purposes of consultation, the proposal to create an Atago enlarged rural fire district.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that one and two are not, one and two A are not then in conflict, because you've effectively, my understanding from the quick answer we've just had, that we go down the road of two A and we are committed to a process that someone else is running, and therefore we don't get another crack at it necessarily, so I'm not sure that that is helpful. I think it would... You're moving it, one and two A?
As on the order paper.
Right, is there a second? Well, it lapses for one of the second, so does someone else want to move? Councillor Butcher?
I'll move one and add on to the end there for purposes of consultation.
Yes.
And two B.
Two B, okay, is there a second? Councillor McTavish? Right, I want, I'll ask for discussion on that. Councillor Weatherall, would you wish to speak initially to that councillor Butcher?
Mainly just, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this, I'm a lifestyle, I've got a small block, I'm concerned that, you know, as I said before, people get busy, you can't read every single thing that comes under your nose, and it's up to us as elected representatives to look at these things and go, whoa, just wait on a minute here, there might be a little bit more community consultation needed. I got an email from somebody this morning who waved a flag for me, and I thought, well, this person knows a lot about this, much more than I do, if he's concerned, I think that we should take it back and at least get some more voice from community boards and other people around the community, not just the forestry owners and big business federated farmers, so I just, that's what I'm trying to do, just get more consultation on it.
Councillor Weatherall?
So my question is this, I certainly support the resolution as it stands, but the word consultation, who are the parties to be consulted? Because they're asked, and I use this in the kind of sense, there's some very big eloquence in the room, in the fire service, the volunteer fire service, the pressures that they're going under today, we just read in the ODT a couple of days ago about the pressures of a community service focus that the Portobello Brigade want to give, and I know there's four or five others in a city like that, that are being instructed and told what they will and won't do. This crosses a whole lot of boundaries, so are we absolutely assured consultation will go across the whole face, interface of the fire needs and demands that the proposals bring up there?
Well councillor Weatherall, the motion as it's put, as it's been put, is that we run the consultation process, so the answer is for us, not necessarily, I think that's the essence of the...
Well, I've raised the issue of the expectation of consultation, sorry, I've raised the expectation of consultation in the wider sense, because it is such a critical matter at a time of an incident and issue, and Mr Storr spoke about some big fires and some real risk stuff we've had, where everyone's worked well together and authorities have combined, this is setting up a process for the future that we need to know has got all parties involved, and resources involved.
Councillor Bezette.
Just another question, I just want to challenge the assumption that if we go with two B, then that will put the process out by a year, I'm not sure, it was you mentioning that, Tony, or one of the other gentlemen, but, I mean, is that your belief? Because I don't see that the council can't consult as quickly, perhaps not as quickly, but close enough as to what the Fire Association would do as well, so does it really put it out by twelve months?
I think it takes us far enough to the next fire season to make us uncomfortable. A financial year, clean changeover, seemed to have some logic, and that being the middle of winter also allowed us to set us up nicely a period of embedding before the spring north west and the fire season increases. So rather than push and cram at the last minute, I think you'd have to think seriously about delaying.
Councillor Thompson?
Look, I'm not at all necessarily opposed to this, I just think there are some questions that are not well answered by the report, and I'm reluctant to hand over our power to make that decision without having those things appropriately answered. I think that the answer to my question from the gentleman, I'm sorry, I don't know his name, was really helpful, because it clarified for me some of the operational concerns that might drive the need for a change, but I think those are some of the things that it would have been helpful to have had in here, and I think that some of the unanswered questions around the concerns of unintended consequences could also have been handled in here, and we may have gone down a different route. When you read that the economies of scale will come through resource rationalisation, there's no other way to interpret that than that plant will, less of it will be concentrated in smaller areas. So I want to understand what the implications of that are, doesn't mean that I would disagree with it, but I want to understand it. And I think the last thing is that I do get nervous, there is a big difference between professionalism and managerialism, and some of the Fraymoreson and Low are brilliant in this, I mean, you ask them a question, they've got to come up with an answer, the answer can't be, don't do anything at all, because you can't possibly justify the fee for that. And frankly, I could have written what they've written, and I very much rather done it for half the price, I'm quite sure. It reeks of cliches, and there's nothing to back them up, there's nothing to say, this is where the resource rationalisation would come from, this is what the operational difficulties are. So I want the time to do that, and that means we have to do our own consultation, because otherwise we're going to hand over the power to make that decision. So I'm not opposed to it, I think probably it's where we need to go, but let's understand what it might mean for us a little better, and I think it doesn't matter if we take a few more months to do that, there's no law that something has to start on the first day of a council's financial year, and if it has to start a couple of months later or whatever, then that's just fine, it's been like this for a long time, I don't see the problem with saying it's a real bad thing if it doesn't start on the first of July, so that's my concern.
Councillor Van de Wiss.
I don't agree that if we don't do the consultation ourselves, that that consultation won't go through a normal and proper consultation process, and that people in Dunedin won't be fully consulted. I'd hope that this would be a discussion on two B, or not two B, but the, and I was originally a wee bit put off by two A's number four suggestion that we approve funding for a forecast transitional expense of fifteen thousand dollars, it's just in my nature to not want to approve new funding, but when I compare the economies of scale that you get, not just with this project, but with actually doing the consultation as well, to me, if you look at attachment one on eighteen point eight, you see such a fractionated, such a chopped up, and such a ludicrously nitpicky arrangement of fire authority, that you can't help but just be acutely embarrassed by it. It's very obvious to me that this arrangement not only voids economies of scale, but creates situations where you've got masses of resource in one place when they're actually needed in another, and the idea that we should have masses of resource sitting in places where it's not needed because certain communities of interest like that, to me, quite frankly, is abhorrent. Fire doesn't know any boundaries, but look at all the boundaries on this fire authority system, it makes no sense at all. There are enormous advantages to be had in rationalising this attachment one situation that we currently have, that we've inherited, and that has been a result of a whole lot of, quite frankly, illogical historical reasons. What we need to do, I believe, is we need to move quickly ahead to make sure that we get the overall economies of scale that has been proposed. Queenstown Lakes, I understand, have already assented to it, they can see the value in it? Sorry, is that not the case? Sorry, I may have picked that up incorrectly. So it's central Atago, Waitaki, and Clutha, so Queenstown Lakes are still considering it, is that the case? Pardon me for picking that up incorrectly. We've got a situation basically where most of our surrounding neighbours can see the sense in it, for us to now suddenly start dragging the chain and say, look, we want to run our own consultation, which is going to cost, I'm sure, an awful lot, more than the fifteen thousand dollars transition suggested in two A. My understanding is that councillor Brown is suggesting a variant of two A, which will still put consultation decisions in our hands very much, but allows the process to actually go ahead more rapidly. It's a kind of compromise, I think councillor Brown...
You speak to the motion that's in front of us, not the...
Ah, okay, my apologies, the motion that's in front of us is two B, I'm suggesting two A, qualification.
Right, councillor Brown.
I'd like to propose a consequential motion if this fails, and I'll just read it to you so that the committee can understand. And what it is, is two A as per the order paper with a number six, and the number six will read that the final decision on two A one, and that is whether the council will support the enlarged fire district, be taken by the Dunedin City Council after the results of the national fire, rural fire authority consultation process is reported to the Dunedin City Council. So basically what that leaves is that the final decision from council would come from the consultation process. Speaking against the motion which we have in two B, my concern is that if we go down this consultation process, we're talking about a rural fire district, and we're talking about the larger rural fire area, and it's about the efficiencies and the gains and the better reactive services going to come. If we consult in Dunedin City and within our boundaries, the most of the submissions are going to be from the urban person who is going to be concerned about the urban fire response, and that's what this document is not about. So I'm quite concerned that if we go down two B, we're going to open up to our community a submission process which will, they will be, have difficulty understanding that the thrust of this document is about dealing with rural fires, and as was clearly established by Graham, it's the large ones, it's not the small fires, they are under control, it's the large rural fires that we need to have a process to deal with. So I will be moving the consequential motion if this fails.
Councillor Wilson.
I think that answers my question, I was actually going to pose a question to Murray, who's now busy. So the question is, can something which is a dual consultation allow the council to back out should it feel that its community do not want to be part of it?
Well, it's a consultation process, and we don't know what we don't know until such time as we get submissions coming into that proposal, so it's advertised, and it's actually advertised by the proposers, not by the NRFA, so it's actually advertised by the, the proposal was advertised by the stakeholders, and the hearings are facilitated by the NRFA, and it's not defined down to the finest detail on how that process would operate in respect of considering those submissions, but as we've alluded to earlier, from experience around the rest of the country, if there are submissions made, those submissions are looked at, and we go back to the stakeholders and to the, and to the submitters, and if it requires a formal hearing, that would follow once perhaps there is no agreement between the stakeholders and the submission, the submitters in respect of the content of that submission.
Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, I still don't know if I'm quite clear on the answer to councillor Wilson's question, which is, is what councillor Brown is foreshadowing actually something that we're able to do? And I think maybe that's what Ms Graham is trying to shed a bit of... So, I guess whilst all of that is happening, I will just speak to the existing motion that we have. Look, I think regardless of not whether we like it, we are charged as city councillors of Dunedin City with representing the interests of this city, and I think that that's what we need to remember when we're having discussions about potential regional benefits and all of those things, that's all great, but as Dunedin city councillors, we need to be ensuring that the interests of our citizens and our city are not compromised by this proposal. that the, the interests of our citizens and our city are not compromised by, um, by this, this, this proposal. Like councillor Thompson, I don't believe that we have clarity in the reports that have come to us. And I don't think, I mean, like councillor Thompson, I think the most, um, useful comment that came from, was from the man on the ground and I appreciate, thank you, Mr. Still, for your comments which clarified to me what the benefits might be in a regional entity like this for us and our citizens. Um, because I think that's ultimately what we need to be looking to. Um, what I'm concerned about is that if this consultation is, is run with the documents in front of us, it's not going to answer those questions for our citizens. It doesn't answer those questions for me. So I don't know how we can expect it to answer those questions for our citizens. Um, I think that we, as a, as a, as a council, need to be very much involved in that process. We need to be, um, asking, asking those questions as part of that process, getting the answers from, from the, the, um, the people who have, um, perhaps quite rightly, um, put together this proposal. Um, I, I don't think that the question here that we should be answering is whether or not we support this proposal. I, I, I think, you know, we've had a proposal come to us from a, from people who have buried their heads in this much longer than we have. What we need to be asking is how we consult with our community on this proposal to ensure that we are getting the best possible feedback that we can, to make the best possible decision that we can, um, for the people of Dunedin. And, um, I'm, 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 the, the concern that I have with two A is that I don't think it does that. I think it takes out of our hands that process and that ability. So that is why I'm supporting two B. Um, I, I, I appreciate that, um, uh, councillor Brown may have an alternative solution, which if viable, um, I think I could probably support. Um, because, but I think ultimately what we need to be doing is we need to be retaining both our, our position as a stakeholder in that process, not least because we need to under, understand the perspectives of, um, of our community so that we can represent them once we're a stakeholder on that group. Um, so, um, so I potentially could support two, two A with councillor Brown's amendment, but I certainly, um, as it stands, will be supporting two B.
Right, councillor Staines and, um, we'll have councillor Staines as the last speaker on this and then we'll, then we'll try and clarify the implications or whether, um, councillor Brown's, uh, suggestion is, is effectively gets the same outcome in a, at a different timeframe than two, two, uh, two B. Councillor Staines.
Thank you, Worship. Um, my reading of the papers suggested to me that the sensible direction is to form the larger rural fire district. As councillor Anavis has pointed out, we are quite fragmented in terms of all the small authorities. There has got to be savings to be made and a better service to be delivered by tying them together. However, when I stood for council, I stood on a plank of community involvement in the decision-making. And what concerned me in here is that effectively you hand over, you say, the decision is made, now we're going to consult about it. And I think that to me left me feeling that I couldn't support what my head said logically is the right way to go. So I will be supporting one and two B unless the option that councillor Brown has put up is possible, in which case I think that is a much better way forwards. It means that the consultation can take place, meaningful input can be received and answered, and a decision made based on that input.
So just, we'll just pause here to consider the implications of this because I think it's important that we know what we're choosing between. Um, now I take it there's been some discussion, uh, around the viability of, in this case councillor Brown's, um, suggestion. So do you need, Paul and Sandy, do you need five minutes? Right, we'll adjourn. We'll be going for two and a half hours anyway. We will adjourn for a ten minute break. Right, our councillors, we will continue. Councillor Hudson, I understand you have a...
Thank you, Worship. I understand there are a number of legal issues that need to be, um, understood and communicated to us and I would move that this matter lies on the table until a council meeting on the seventh of October.
Secretary councillor Noon. There's no discussion, it's a procedural motion, I'll put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry it. Thank you. Right, councillors, we'll move on to, uh, what was item seventeen, which is now item eighteen, uh, warmed Dunedin targeted rate scheme.
It's a good try, it's a good try, Katie.
Right, um, I'll open up the first instance for questions of Nicola. So, any questions? councillor McTavish.
My, um, I think my only question is the ECA, um, one of the reasons I think why we limited ourselves to insulation and clean heat is because we were able to use ECA-approved providers or ensure that people were using ECA-approved providers, um, in those areas. Is it, um, um, the case that even though there won't be an ECA component to the scheme, um, we will still be limiting people to use of those approved providers? Or how will it work?
We will be, we will be still using the ECA-approved providers and ECA will still be, um, paying for and providing that assessment of the quality and, um, the audit, I guess, of the quality of the installation, which is something then that council doesn't have to pick up the cost.
Any further questions? councillor Noon.
It's a question that's been bouncing around the community over the last few weeks with regards to using local products. And I just wondered with their policy, do we stipulate any, um, restriction on using products from outside the, the region, so to speak? Because I know there is a manufacturer in the, in the city that produces insulation, but I'm not sure whether that's the case or not. Just clarify, please.
That is one of the, one of the providers, one of the products, but it's certainly not the only one. It, it is something though that we could collect information about. We could, we could count that up and let you know at the end of this next phase, if you like, phase two of the trial, if you like, under the new ECA rules. We could certainly let you know what the relative proportions where it could be a subject for discussion as to what we might do if people are still taking up this, this option to finance insulation.
That'd be good, thank you. councillor Butcher.
So Nicola, is there any way that we can now, um, change the scheme slightly to, um, let people apply for solar hot water heating systems as well as part of this, um, as part of the scheme? Is there any movement in there for that to happen?
Um, it's, it's interesting because Nelson's actually moved away from the solar hot water pilot and ECA has some, some reservations about, about whether that is the best bang for the buck. Um, certainly, once you are insulated, double glazed and so on, then it is another step that households can take. But for houses that don't have insulation, uh, that is clearly from ECA's perspective, um, the most cost of, cost-effective form of, um, home sustainability gain that can be made. Uh, and then our clean heating is the second and, and solar would be in that next bunch. So at this point, um, certainly you could add that in. At this point, our recommendation is to see without any kind of subsidy from ECA, what kind of take-up is there? Knowing that ECA are providing now this new programme with, um, with just insulation for low-income people who have community services card for their houses. And we see what kind of take-up we have outside of that very low-income group.
Any further questions? councillor Stevens.
It sort of builds on what Pluss was just asking about. So not necessarily for solar water heating, but say double glazing or skylights or gazebos or any other sort of energy, solar gain mechanism. When I read four, that could potentially come up then if there was a benefit in expanding it. Do you would bring it up then?
Yes, certainly we would.
Good job. And that would include solar water but...
Potentially so, yes.
And wind power?
Potentially so. Mate, within your $5,000 per household limit, that might put some restrictions on, but these are things to look at, that's right.
Okay, that's good, thanks.
councillor Staines.
I'm happy to move the resolution.
Right, is there a second councillor Butcher? Second councillor Butcher, discussion. Do you want us to speak to it, councillor Staines up front?
Yes, I, I think it's unfortunate that ECA funding is disappearing from this, but I think it's, it's good for us to continue to run the scheme through its trial period. And that will give us a much better fix on just how the community is reacting. Uh, and we do know as a city that we have a lot of substandard housing. And so I think it is within the responsibility of council to try and provide means that will encourage, uh, houses that are, or the owners of houses that are substandard to do something about it. Um, my belief is that at the end of this trial, if it's worked, that there is the possibility to expand. And I think probably we should be taking ECA's recommendations on the next most effective area, uh, for that expansion when we get to that point. So I certainly support these resolutions.
councillor Stevens.
Yeah, no, I think that this is, um, I'm glad that we're going to continue the scheme. I look forward to how we could expand or extend it afterwards. If we can encourage people to be brave and to borrow the money to improve their houses, and that's good thing. People find borrowing money scary and they feel much more comfortable borrowing it through their aid system. And, um, if people insulate their homes, it's investing in our community and it's jobs and they're both things that we need. So, um, I know that, you know, it's a, it's a good scheme and it will help young people find work and I think that's a good thing.
councillor McTavish.
Just with reference to the additional, um, expanding the, the, the range of, of things that, my understanding was when we first ticked off the scheme, which I'm very supportive of and which I think has been quite successful under the, the, the way that it's operated to date. Um, we, we did move a motion that, that the, the results would be reported back to us and that at that point we would look at, um, potentially broadening the range. And I, I think that that's the appropriate time to do so, so I'm supporting this. Uh, but looking forward to that report when it comes forward.
No further discussion. councillor Staines. I'm going to put it, all those in favour? Against? Carry it. Thank you. Um, on to item number nineteen, which is the, um, responsible camping policy bylaw. Now, there are two parts to this, um, the minutes.
Worship, just before you start, can I just, I, I think I need to declare an interest. I'm not planning to occupy any particular place where you can't occupy. No, I'm, I'm, I've got land adjacent to one of the sites, so I think I'm better.
councillor Noon is decamping. Right, so, um, question, councillor Wilson.
I, I was just going to, for the minutes of the hearing, I was just going to move, uh, the resolution nineteen A that the minutes of the responsible freedom camping policy and control of camping bylaw hearing the subcommittee held on the fifth and twenty-first of August, two thousand and thirteen, be noted.
Second, and councillor Butcher. Any discussion on noting the minutes? There being, now I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry it. Right, we need to move on to nineteen B and we have the report, um, and the recommendations go with that. I'll open it up to questions. Questions. councillor Stevens.
Okay, um, for the maps, um, I can quite see, clearly see in Ralphham Park, there's toilets. But for the others, I know that there are toilets, see, they're just not marked on the maps. And I can't remember if they're, um, they've got water reticulated, water going to them or not. So could you just quickly clarify that?
Yes, me too.
Great, that's fantastic.
Further questions?
I'll, I'll hopefully move, move the motions as, um, on the, on the recommended page. Um, I just note that there were eleven submissions, submissions, um, all of very good quality and, um, there was really good discussion. Um, and thank the staff for their, on the matter and the, um, panel and the submitters. Thank you.
So you're going to councillor Butcher?
Well, I wanted to, um, add in an amendment to nineteen seven. Nineteen seven. Because I did ask Kate for this before, but she was really, I don't think she, she might not have got my email or something or maybe she decided it was just too controversial to put it in. So I'm going to just test the mood of this meeting. And we sat on this hearing, it was a really good hearing, got a lot of people along. But the point was made to us, basically this, there's sick of people coming into this area and pooing on Otago. So what I said, Kate and I decided that it was a good idea to put something up front on this Dunedin care code that really shocks people who are reading it, rather than this, oh, let's all be nice and pretend that, you know, nobody's doing it. They are doing it, they're pooing all over the place and they're not picking it up. So I wanted to just test the, the mood of the meeting. Could it, please add in at the top there, don't poo on Otago. That is the first one I've got and I've given it to Pam. The second one I wanted to do, and I think this is just probably a misunderstanding here, um, on sentence or paragraph one, two, three, where it says, count, this is page nineteen seven again, council land is for the benefit of all residents and reserves, oh, and residents and reserves are. And I want to add in there, after are, taonga, that is, being treasured by the community.
Shouldn't it be that are?
Residents and reserves are, taonga, that is, treasured.
No, that, I'm, I'm asking, shouldn't it be that are treasured since it's plural?
Oh, taonga is plural, yeah. So, okay, we probably need to consult on that. Um, but I just think it's important to have that word in there because if people are coming to New Zealand because of our Maori connections and all that stuff that we hold dear, if we can just make the point with them again that this is taonga, it means the thing that makes us different with our Maori connections, put it in there. It might make them go, mm, okay, I really need to be a bit more careful.
The mover, councillor Wilson moved it, are you happy to have those amendments?
I'm happy with the second one. I have a comment on the first one where I think it's more one that comes out on the implementation material that comes out later, not on the key.
So you'd rather not have it?
I'd rather not have the first one, I appreciate it was discussed.
Not have poo in your motion?
Yeah, obviously, yeah. Thank you. At least it's one of the poo in which case I'll do it many day.
Okay, well, we're just...
Now, what, well, hang on. As the mover has indicated what she is prepared to have in the motion that she's moving, um, are you, are you still happy to second with only taonga included? Councillor Butcher.
There was certainly discussion about both matters at the, um, hearings panel. The second one was agreed to, the third one, um, wasn't agreed to and, well, albeit it was discussed and I think I might have mentioned it myself. Um, but it's where I think the staff thought it was better brought into the implementation line, not necessarily exactly.
So I'm asking, now, what I'm asking is a matter of process. I'm asking councillor Butcher, are you still prepared to second or do I need another second?
Um, for the, the first, the first recommendation, I think I have to because I was on the committee, the hearing.
So we'll, we'll, we'll take out the additional line with, um, don't poo on Otago.
So can we just have some discussion about it because I mean, it's really...
We have, and, and, hang on, this is a matter of process. The mover has indicated that she's not comfortable with that and I'm asking you whether you're prepared to second it without that in or not.
No.
Right, is there another second? Secretary councillor McTavish. Right, discussion. These are the, the recommendations, the, these, these, um, this addition of taonga is in the Dunedin care code, but the recommendations are on page nineteen point one and that's what's being moved.
Can I then move as an amendment, the addition of don't poo on Otago to go up front under the...
Is there a second for that? councillor Hudson. Discussion. councillor Collins.
I mean, just a little bit of dignity, could we use the word defecate if that's, uh, or do you want people not to poo at the campway?
It's no more dignified when you do it. Further discussion. councillor Vandis.
I wish Hamish was still here and would like you all to consider how he would like promoting that as a byline for tourism in Otago. Don't we need to say any more?
Is there any further discussion? councillor Bazie.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I just don't like it. Um, it's, to me, it's, um, I'm dignified and, um, I would, I would certainly vote against it, no question.
Further discussion? Just want to be clear that what we're voting on is whether the words don't poo on Otago are included in the care code wording. This has got nothing to do with the recommendations of the substantive motion. I'm gonna put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
You put in the substantive motion?
Sorry?
My apologies.
Counsel Stevenson, I can't hear when two people are talking at once and neither of them should be.
Don't I get a, write a reply?
Certainly.
Okay. Look, the reason why I'm putting it in here is to highlight that this is a real problem. It's not gonna go away by just pretending that it's not happening. It is happening. We had submitters come and tell us. They want us to try and do something about it. So if this is a, a real radical, in-your-face way to say, stop doing it, to make people sit up and realise that there are other places to do it. That's fine with me, but you know, if you don't think it's dignified, that's fine. Keep letting them do it.
Right, I'm gonna put it. All those in favour of including the phrase in the care code, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Lost. Now, we'll move back to the substantive motion and discussion on that. Any further, Counsel Stevenson?
Um, in general, I'm very supportive of this. However, I do have a concern, and this is even for self-contained camper vans. If they go to an area with a toilet but it has not got reticulated water, they may be naughty and use the public facilities and that causes a drain on the water. We know that out at Tharoni Reserve, we do need to truck water out there. It's not reticulated water. We have to get truckloads of water, take it out there and fill the toilets that way. Um, and so I don't want to encourage the use of this, even with camper vans that is completely self-contained because it could put an extra strain on that system that the public also feels. Um, so we've already said, we don't want too many on any site because we don't want the public having a bit that feel pushed out. But I think one of the other consequences is like an extra use of these toilets that do not have reticulated water. If we've got reticulated water, which most of our, our um, reserves actually do have reticulated water, I have no problems. But I feel like there's one part of this aspect that hasn't been considered and you know, and I do think there will be um, a small impact. So I know that I'm, I'm not talking about those without toilets.
So, can we just be clear, Counsel Stevenson, are you speaking against the motion or for it?
Um, I'm just, I'm not a hundred percent certain that we've got it right, so I might be voting, I will vote against it.
Any further discussion? Okay, um, Counselor Wilson, you moved it. Just write a reply. Right, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carry it. Okay. Now, we'll move on to item. Uh, item twenty. Aquatic Facilities.
See, I didn't even ask for it.
Right, um, before we go in, and I'm aware that there may be some uh, adjustments or amendments proposed to the recommendations, but before we go there, I'll open it up to questions or clarification. Counsel Wilson?
Sir, can I just do a brief introduction?
Sure.
Because I think that may be the appropriate way. Uh, the, the report that's come from the Aquatic Working Party has some goals. One of the first goals is we're required to report to council before entering Australia. But it needs for us to say we want it more timely, can't, so that's not a debate because we heard the prepared report and it's been done in a manner that's been circulated to. There are some details and Mr Avery and Mr Prescott, I'm sure, will, will add to any clarification of those required. But quite simply, it is this. It is a set of recommendations from the working party to take through the council's annual plan process in fourteen fifteen and the ongoing discussion fifteen sixteen, sixteen seventeen, and when that may be. We know that there is a um, a challenge before council about resourcing such an activity. We have a live situation maintaining a facility at Moskew. We've done a comparison between a number of pool sites across the city, totting down to two. An upgrade and expansion of Moana Pool versus, and in parallel to. And I say that very carefully because ultimately, money was not an object. Two upgrades and two additions would be the ultimate picture, I'm sure the working party would have said. But we know that common sense has, has to take a priority in that. That the preference has been given to leading the discussion onto a development of a facility at Moskew. So what I'm asking for, quite simply, is the plate, the report is incomplete. We identified that there is further investigation work and study that needs to be done and work to be added to it. But it gives you the foundation stones to report to the annual plan process of council fourteen fifteen to take through further regulatory work, further investigation of models types, values and numbers, and some numbers being given. But more importantly, and equally importantly, is the opportunity for the southern catchment driven around the Moskew location through the Moskew Kari Community Board, the Saddleup Community Board, Stretthari Community Board, and that catchment in wide area. That's identified as the growth opportunity to expand aquatic facilities at demand in the city and take some pressure off Moana Pool to start consultation in their community of what can they contribute. There is no doubt that a partnership relationship on whatever form that may develop is the way that it would have the best chance to go forward. If it was a standalone add-to facility, council will not, I'm sure, even in my wildest dreams, commit to that now or in the most immediate short term. But with a relationship and a partnership of utilizing some of the council asset by way of land ownership, if it's, if it's appropriate, and we're aware of a potential other private operator op- opportunity in Moskew, but it looks like council land would be the ultimate way to go. What do we do with the current site? What do we do with other sites? Without being specific with the Moskew, and can that community join them with council and partner a project going forward, sir? So, except there are some shortcomings in the report. I don't think it's appropriate today to go to the fine print detail. We're setting that opportunity up through consultation led by the chief executive as we go into that phase of council, or council goes into that phase. And the answers will be coming together as a group. So, I'm sure Mr Avery, Mr Prescott, all my colleagues in the working party, and I thank them for their work. Counselor um, you know, that fellow here just disappeared, actually disappeared, but I do apologise for him not being here. Um, but certainly Counsel Wilson, um, Mr Dylan, uh, who has been part of the working party, and staff in particular, Mr Avery's team have done a superb job supporting us. And uh, I just ask you to consider it in the general totality of how it's been presented and allow it to go through into the process as part of council's work in the future.
Now, I'll open it up to questions and I, given that your signature, Counselor Wetherall, is on the end of it, you may wish to participate in answering some of those.
Thank you, sir.
Questions? Counsel McTavish?
Well, I, I take Counselor, sorry. I take Counselor Wetherall's um, point that there's, there's um, to keep questions at the high level and I, I mean, I don't necessarily want to um, ask all these questions today, your worship. So, I don't know whether or not you, you'd like me to flag up some questions and concerns that I still have um, for uh, during a debate, rather than to go into um, a minutiae of, of detail around the, the report itself.
If you need clarification or information in order to participate in the discussion obstructively, then ask the question now. But if you uh, ra- if you simply want to raise um, questions that are not answered, then, and that's appropriate in the debate, then leave them till then.
Yeah, okay, I might just wait till something's moved.
Just, just at the moment, clarifying any, all our understandings of, of the report and recommendations. Any further questions? Counselor Bezir?
I was just looking for the um, figures with regards to projected costs. And I think I read somewhere in here with about eight or nine million dollars. Um, plus other um, additional costs that may accrue. Um, has staff given any thought to, you know, how that money, um, those funds might be applied or where they may come from? Because we're talking about two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and while council might agree to allowing this or having this um, these recommendations go through, uh, we're really talking about a relatively short period of time and quite a substantial um, funding requirement. So has there been any thought at all with regards to the funds?
Uh, through Mr Mayor, the um, what the Aquatic Facilities Working Party has um, focused on is the, is the pool needs. So, um, the, the working party didn't, wasn't tasked and couldn't deal with the financial implications of the fifteen sixteen long-term plan in terms of where any pool options fitted in. The reason for the recommendations um, is that that actually needs to come back to council for determination, A, about whether the recommendations of the working party around the preferred option at Moskew and what might happen at Moana Pool are supported or not. And the council during that process will then need to also determine timing and funding and any community contribution that might be made. Because it's only through that long-term plan process that the council can balance um, the, the competing demands that will inevitably be there to keep within the financial strategy. Um, so the working party in effect couldn't do that task. What we've tried to do though is to say um, at Moskew, because there's been an enormous amount of debate um, at Moskew about what sort of pool, how big, what sort of facilities, to try and narrow that down so that there is more specific um, proposal that does allow for that consideration about timing and funding and appropriateness, but only really, that's got to come back to the council.
Sir, if I could just perhaps add that there is one component Mr Avery has commented on that would be worth, and I give these just as an example of the council. If the development of the core facility was eight million dollars, give or take whatever it might be, and council in its duration of two, three, four years, five years, and talks of five years, there may be an opportunity for the community to contribute, I'm just gonna use a one million dollar number, or whatever way that may be. So if they want to up, enhance and upgrade and go to a more recreational type facility following consultation, then there could be a participation basis. But council hasn't made, sorry, the working party has absolutely, as Tony has said, have given no priority to what council's call will be. We do accept seeding funding only in fourteen fifteen to allow some investigation-type work, maybe that's a hundred thousand dollars, whatever it may be. So that project can get some live things around it so you can make a fully informed answer.
Counsel Stevenson?
Yes, I've got um, several questions. Um, my first question was about the non-preferred pool options and Counselor Wetherall would know that I've been very keen on school pools and looking at the recycling of school pools. So you can see that that's um, a four-page, or maybe really a three-page report. And it covers all the school pools that are covered in here. So I find it, um, I'm very pleased to see that you did have a look at the annual plan submission, which was to use the energy efficiency at the ice skating rink, but there was a problem with sea level rise making the site unviable, which was unfortunate. Yet there's other sites with school pools that could be recycled. I know they're not very big, such as Forbury, right next to Marlo Pa's freezers. And that heat, waste heat could be an energy synergy that could feed into the pool. By no means ideal, and I don't know if it could be considered, but my first question is that there's so many school pools here, like um, there's the old Forbury School Pool plus numerous other school pools. If these, three pages wasn't very much, just it was, is there any hope that we can find a cheaper option for the inner city through looking at those school pools, expanding them ever so slightly or finding some synergies with the factories next door?
Counsel Stevenson? Counsel Stevenson, are you aware that an attachment to non-preferred pool options report, does, does that report not answer your questions?
Um, that's exactly what I'm referring to, sir, and you'll see that on page twenty, the sectional uses school pools, it's here at the very bottom of the page there. And then it goes for um, about two paragraphs. I'm just thinking that, you know, for the number of swimming pools, that is a very brief report. So it's just, is, is there any other hope that there might be something there?
Short answer, sir, is no. Efficiency of scale and development and investment of dollar values for future aquatic centres in the city wouldn't meet any recreational standards to meet. That's the hard-nosed facts. All of them have got merit in their own right, as have the new pools in Clare down in Stating and other places. But when you weigh up the scale of economy for the efficiency of the people and the operation, Mr Prescott needs to run the only one that comes near, because as you well aware, right now, Counsel Stevenson, and I think I get this number reasonably close, for every dollar admission's paid at Moana Pool, it costs the rate payer another dollar. To make it even stand up to work, the answer is no, sadly.
That was my first question, and, and thank you for answering me. It's just that there was only one paragraph that were half a page for effectively all the school pools. I felt it warranted a little more. But thank you for answering me. Um, the other question is, is the effect of the Moskew Pool. In the original report, it made it quite clear that the Moskew Pool would have some effect on the pressure at Moana Pool, but it would be minimal. And this um, updated report doesn't particularly clarify how much of the pressure at Moana Pool will be relieved by the Moskew Pool redevelopment. So um, I, I understand it will be, it will be some, but not huge.
Sir, the, the most qualified person in this city is Mr Prescott and I'll concede to him to answer. The short answer is ultimately two pools, developing Moana Pool and this, and the Moskew, or the southern catchment, would be the ideal operation to make Mr Prescott smile. But he will tell you the, the benefits of one versus the other and how best it may or may not work.
So my, just so, um, my question is, it's for Moskew Pool only, how much pressure is that likely to take off Moana?
Through the mayor, it won't take a lot off um, Moana. Um, due to the fact that we have all the water polo and canoe polo and that, uh, those activities at Moana and because it's a centralised uh, area, I, I don't believe it'll have a, a huge impact. Um, even looking at those people swimming at it, Moskew, um, we have a number that come into town, like all the kids that go swimming and they're still gonna come to town because, you know, most of them go to school here. So um, I don't believe it'll have a huge impact on Moana at all. Um, it may um, be an opportunity for some of the rugby clubs to actually go out there and use the facility um, for aqua jogging and recovery work because we cannot cater for them within Moana. But I don't believe it'll have a huge impact on Moana's numbers going through the door.
I, I would just like that to be noted at the very least in the minutes. It's an important fact. And then my last question was um, to do with um, it's the report, at a later date, further, um, the further investigations. If it is possible to have a look at finding, not only funding from other sources, but whether there could be a targeted rate for even just a small pool?
Is this a question?
Yes, it's a question. That could be covered within the um, additional investigations.
I think that was answered by someone else and answered. Counsel Vandis.
But not the targeted rate class.
Counsel Vandis.
On twenty point nine, it says that there are a hundred and twenty people on the waiting list with a Tari Swimming Club. On twenty point thirteen, it says that most Moana Pool-based swimming clubs have waiting lists. But it doesn't say how many people are on the Moana Pool-based swimming clubs. Have you got even a rough idea?
Um, I can, oh, through the mayor, I can let you know that um, the uh, most of the swimming, swimming clubs have uh, waiting lists and I think from my understanding, we have Neptune who have probably about a hundred and twenty waiting. We have Dunedin Club that has about fifty or sixty. And we also, within the coaching um, regime, we also have a number that is still waiting to get into, into the, into the clubs.
So the, the, the figure of a hundred and twenty waiting at the Tari Swimming Club, there's actually quite a few more waiting also on Moana.
Oh, throughout the whole of the city. Throughout the whole of the city, there's probably, I'd say, maybe three hundred, three hundred and fifty children waiting to get into clubs.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that. Now, on page twenty point three, it talks about new pool estimated cost, eight, eight point nine five million, excluding land costs. Do we have any idea what, how much land is required, roughly what the cost would be? Are we talking millions for that or?
I have no idea at all. We haven't looked at land costs in any way, I fool.
Okay.
Uh, just, uh, one of the reasons for that is in a sup- assumption that um, potential use of reserve land out at Moskew, um, that would be a need to go through the community, but it might all, might be land already owned by the council as opposed privately and that might need to be purchased.
Right, and we still have a value though and we would need to have some indication.
Yes, I suppose because um, a site hasn't been located, uh, we've made that explicit in terms of the assumptions and that the price only does relate to the construction of the pool.
Right.
And there are some options out of Moskew that would need to be worked through that might have it on existing council-owned land, but that would need to be worked through.
Okay, on twenty point nine, it says a new pool would be open uh, twelve months of the year uh, to address capacity constraints. I think it's seven months currently. Um, have you looked at the extra running costs of a new pool? Considering that you're running a longer time uh, and really a, a, a much newer pool is gonna have significantly more running costs as well? Have you looked at any of those ongoing costs?
The um, what we've uh, attempted to do in the report, um, and it's really from page twenty ten onwards, with all of the options includes ten onwards, with all of the options, includes a annual operating cost figure. That annual operating cost figure is being developed through the same financial spreadsheets that we use for the other project, it's been overseen by the financial analysts. Those operating, annual operating costs includes depreciation, debt servicing costs, and we've been trying to be very rigorous around the operating costs for each of those pool options based on what we currently know about operating Moana Pool, what we know about operating costs from other new pools that have been established which have a lower operating cost. So we've tried to be as rigorous as we can to make sure that what's shown as an annual operating cost will cover all the costs of running the facility as best we can.
Okay, I note that the Moana Pool proposal for a wood chip burner is going to reduce running costs there, would you anticipate a similar situation in Mozgill?
Certainly the experience from around the country, and if you go to Timaru, which is the most recent pool, we were going to go for a site visiting, we still would. The technology around building the pools in terms of heat recovery systems, dual layers or triple layers, heating systems, everything else, it's a long way ahead of what we might have at Moana. So we'd actually be building it based on the current best knowledge around building such a facility, and indeed it's the likes of the Timaru operating costs which we've used as trying to benchmark the operating cost for these sort of facilities.
Thank you very much.
councillor Noon.
I just have a question around key assumptions on page twenty point nine. Under participation, it talks about average number of swims per capita in New Zealand pools, three point two visits per capita. Do we know the figures relating to Mozgill, or that's pretty much run of the mill throughout the country? It's accepted that we know different to the national average?
Yeah, there was, we had information that the team pulled together, which was per capita information for most of the pools that we can think of, really, all the Kryosik pools, Timaru, Rollaston, Carpathia, we had information for Mozgill, we had information for Moana Pool, and there was quite a big variation in that per capita number, and there was debate at the working party about which number to actually use. So that was available at the time, there's material around that. But maybe one of the members of the working party wants to comment, even that information was very varied, so we've picked a number and stated it so that the assumptions are clear.
What's the best guess?
It's better than best guess, and I think Mr. Prescott will be again the man to qualify. The numbers that Mr. Prescott and his team have gave us were significantly higher than the national average. But for a margin of safety, we took the national average as being the number that we'd run with. If I get it correctly, I think the number was over five. Six point two, it's double the national average, is the best indication, not guess, best indication Mr. Prescott can give us on the population base we have. We have very high usage, swim sensation, whatever the reason is, there's a whole bunch of reasons. But we, in a climate that is best in the country, provide the best average swim numbers, twice the national average. So for safety, we've worked on a number less, so we don't get caught overestimating a position that falsifies later on, didn't quite make it, we'll do better than that without a doubt.
Any further questions? Okay, would someone like to move something?
The resolution may be appear a little loose, but I'm prepared to move one to five, based on the basis, the very clear premises, the reference, this goes to the annual plan process, with further investigation work to be done, there is no commitment to council other to consider, but encourage and support the Southern Catchment to start its investigation, so it can report into the annual plan work on progress as it goes. That clearly is the guts and the theme, sir.
Second to councillor Brown, discussion, councillor McTavish.
Well, I guess firstly I'd like to thank working party for the work that they have done, because I think, you know, it's been a long process, and I think that the work that they have undertaken has been thorough, and I think we've just heard on one particular data or figure, the amount of consideration that has been given to that. However, I am going to struggle to support these recommendations as they're currently worded. There are a few reasons for that. The first is I think that we've given the working party a bit of a hard deal really, in that we went away, we said to them, please go away and draft up a set of your recommendations based on what you think would be best for aquatics in the city. That's not really the question that we probably should have asked, and we probably should have said, look, what we can afford to spend as a city over the next ten years, or whatever it is, on aquatics is X million, or X thousand, a hundred thousand, or whatever it is. Please, within that parameter, come back to us with a set of recommendations about how you would proceed. My sense is that if we had given them that task, we may have had a different response, we may have had some indication of the need for staging around things like investing in the investor save that councillor Vandervis has referenced in terms of the wood chip boiler, which might then provide us with a revenue stream, or at least a savings stream that we could use elsewhere. I appreciate that councillor Wetherall's view is that we, that this needs to come back to annual plan and work through the process there, that's all fine, but I think that the way that these recommendations are currently structured, it's not clear to the public that these recommendations are subject to that financial strategy and to annual plan deliberations, and simply will be part of the mix. I think that at the moment, it's sending too strong an indication to the community that this is something that we are wholeheartedly behind. So I struggle with that aspect of it. The second aspect that I struggle with is that, and I flagged this up over the weekend, is that in terms of the car parking requirements at Moana, I reject the notion that the problem is a lack of car parking. The problem that I see there is that there is a lack of transport choice available to people who want to visit that facility. That manifests itself in everyone having to travel by car, which manifests itself in a shortage of car parking. I think that we are limiting ourselves by referencing only parking constraints, and we are avoiding talking, speaking to the full range of possibilities that might be available to us in trying to deal with that problem. I don't see an indication in the report that transportation planning or transportation ops have been involved in discussions around this, which is possibly why that isn't reflected, and maybe that's work to tap them down the track, but in terms of the motion that we have in front of us, it only references parking constraints, and I find that difficult to accept. I think the other thing that I'm not seeing in these reports, and again, it's not a criticism of the working party because I don't think that we asked them to do this, but the concern that I have is that in the context of talking about things like development contributions, in the context of talking about things like potential community revenue generation, in the context of talking about the spatial plan, it's really critical that we understand what the growth component of any particular proposed venue is. So we've clearly in this document, and I think the working party have done a great job at it, identified what the problem is in each pool. So I think it's something like twenty or twenty hours a week at Mozgill, twenty pool hours which aren't fulfilled, forty or thirty in winter here in Moana. That's a clear problem definition, that's great. What it doesn't go on then to say is, of these options, which, how much of that growth component is going to be provided for or fulfilled by that, sorry, which of the unfulfilled demand is going to be fulfilled, and what is additional, what is growth component, what is extra? And I think that we all know from the development contributions discussions that we've had, that it's critical that we identify that growth component, and we just, we simply don't have that here, and I think, you know, in the context of trying to provide a venue of the right size in the right place, that's critical information that we don't have in front of us. In terms of the assumptions around the operating costs, I have shared similar questions to those of councillor Vandervis in terms of energy costs going forward and how those could be reduced, and the land costs. I just don't think that I can endorse the resolutions as they stand, because I think it gives too clear an indication that we're going down one path, it's closing off those options in terms of transportation solutions around Moana, and I think that we need to provide more space around all of those options for council to consider as we go into budget deliberations.
councillor Vandervis.
I can't support these recommendations either, but I think for probably slightly different, well, maybe rather different reasons. The five recommendations that we are faced with, I see as being the thin end of a very, very fat wedge. We're talking about a pool with an estimate of eight point nine five million, and you know what preparatory estimates have been in the past in relation to what they actually ended up being? No land costs, no running costs. My question really is, or what I would like you to consider is, where is this money supposed to come from? We've dug a six hundred and fifty million dollar deep hole already as a council, in terms of debt, sorry, six hundred and twenty-three, I think was the latest.
Point of order, councillor Brown.
What point of order is exactly what I said in my previous speech, people have the classic habit of exaggerating debt, and the debt is six hundred and twenty-three million consolidated.
My apologies, I was only recently aware of the update on six fifty, six hundred and twenty-three million dollars just sounds so much better. I feel almost relieved, almost suggesting that perhaps I should just sit down and we just buy this thing after all, no. Six hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth of debt, let's not worry about the six fifty. Where is the money coming from? Where does this money even exist? What I would like you to consider is that when the Tari Herald asked me to put out what I would do if I was going to be mayor and run the show, one of the things that I said I would do for the Tari is not kid them that the money existed for a new pool. I was expecting when I said this to get a bit of flack over it. All the responses I got were positive, now I know people tend only to talk to you if they like you. But quite frankly, I think a lot of people accept that there is no money. And in terms of getting a new pool, the new pool that we want to really consider the possibility of is the enormous saltwater one we might have in South Dunedin if that seawall doesn't get sorted out. We have no headroom, there is no money to do this. These five recommendations are the thin end of an unaffordable wedge, we need to vote against them, even though this is the last hurrah in terms of spending.
councillor Thompson.
Thank you, I could agree with councillor Vandervis on your point of view, but then we'd both be wrong. I can't think that what we're looking at here today, or the prospect of getting some facilities distributed around the city of ours, hasn't come here a day too soon. And if I could put a word in for Mozgill, first of all, I should say, I don't swim, I can't swim, it seems a long, long time ago since I got my little school certificate for doing a length of the pool, which was probably a baptism in those days. But I do know that plenty of people do swim, as councillor Wetherall said, and we've got a very high proportion of people who like to go for a swim. And what we have in the city really is inadequate facilities for swimmers, for people who want to use the pool. I've checked out Mozgill a few times over the years, and I went back on Saturday afternoon to have another look to see if it had gotten any better, if things have improved around that pool, they haven't. It'd be stretching a bit far to say that it's looking clapped out, but it's certainly inadequate. It is trying to serve a community out there in Mozgill, which let's face it, is the fastest rising area of this entire city. The population growth out there is extraordinary compared to other parts of the city, and yet we're offering them what really is an inadequate facility. There are queues out there for people to try and get to use the pool, there are schools out there, large schools, and they're all competing with about eight lanes or something like that, and there's a learner's pool, there's no dive pool, everything's cramped, everything's looking old and retarded. It needs this council, if not this one, certainly the next one, I won't be part of it, but people that are probably in about five or 10 minutes going to be starting to look at expenditure for cycleways in the city which may run to tens of millions, tens of millions of dollars, should start looking at prioritising the money into the future, and looking at what the city needs, what its population needs, and in this case, pools such as Moana and such as Mozgill, and certainly Mozgill, that's where our funds and our future thoughts should be, and I would be supporting all of those recommendations here and urge the council to get on with it.
councillor Wilson.
I would like, I support the report in that I was on the Aquatic Working Party, we went in with a very strange resolution from council, and so I've supported it coming this far. I now sit around the council table with my council hat on and am slightly concerned that we have to give a very clear message. I would like to recommend some changes if possible, if they could be accepted by the Melbourne Secunda, to one B, and that reads, at Moana Pool, within the next ten years, if existing shortages caused by lack of viable, oh sorry, parking shortages caused by lack of viable alternative transport options are available, oh sorry, can be resolved. And that issue is, I mean, since I've done this, I've been on the transportation option, strategy, and I've learned a lot about the concerns of the council and where we can go with alternative choices of transport, and I think that we need to consider that. I'm also really concerned that this debate though, is saying there is no way forward. And I want to say, there is a way forward, it's about empowering the community to do what we may not be able to do ourselves. And to that end, I do want to support us having a dialogue both at the finance, annual plan and long-term plan meetings, and with the Mozgill community, and see what their options and their contribution may be. Because if we do not pass this today, then we can't have that discussion. I do think the words are loose, we have got a financial strategy that does preclude it for some years, but we have to work our way through that, and, I mean, I would have preferred tighter words voting for it at this level, but I'm prepared to be led by a general manager that's confident that the reports will come out about development contributions and options about that at the annual plan hearings, that can give us some better steer on that. But if we don't do this today, then we're not going to engage a communication with the Mozgill community that can look at a way forward, rather than putting up a wall.
councillor Noon.
Thank you, worship, just three points. Firstly, I support the five recommendations going to the next stage, but I'm not going to sell my soul at this point, in terms of making a commitment to either an upgrade or a replacement to a swimming pool at Mozgill, or any additional facility with the Moana Pool, i.e. the car park upgrade. But I think the important thing is, this regards to Mozgill, the council facility there is probably getting to the stage, it's nearly past the dues by date, so I think a prudent council needs to be thinking about at some point in the future, and I'm not prepared, as I say at this point, to make a commitment financially, but I recognise that that debate will come at a later council through the new trainee, and probably the following year, but at the end of the day, we need to think about a replacement swimming facility, a swimming pool facility in the Mozgill area.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Your worship, I can agree with recommendations one to three, because they don't bind us, but they enable us to investigate these issues more closely. I'm particularly concerned that we have a financial strategy, and that we should not send a signal that we are supportive of a particular direction, or more importantly, a particular timing around that direction, unless we are clear about the impacts on our financial strategy. And I think that point one is noting that the working party has a view around where the relative prioritisation should lie, and I think that we, I feel quite comfortable that that's the appropriate process for them to do that, and we should be listening to that. Secondly, number two, I think it's reasonable that the findings of Secondly, number two, I think it's reasonable that the findings of the working party be used as the basis for further investigative work around the preferred options. I think there are some questions that arise. As councillor Vandevos points out, there are significant waiting lists in the city. And when you start investigating relative cost against relative problem, then you may come up with some different answers, which you would not necessarily expect the working party to come up with in the absence of that financial analysis. So I think that two allows us to do that and it doesn't close off completely other options. And three, to enable that, I think we do have to be prepared to approve a certain amount of spending so that the resources are there to enable those questions to be answered. However, to go past that at this point in time would be sending a signal that I personally would find difficult. I would, I understand that there may be an alternative, did I see you up there?
I did, I did. Number two.
Well, look, what I would, at the moment, I would have to vote against four and five, but I would, I would seek, I would ask the mover whether they would be prepared to have a replacement pool four put in, which was to agree that the identified costs be modelled against the financial strategy and the impact reported back before consideration of any timing and prioritisation. Now, that for me would enable me to comfortably approve this, to acknowledge the problem, there is a problem, to acknowledge the desire to fix that problem, but not to move past that until we understand the dimensions of the financial solution and how that fits with where we're placed. And I don't, I don't think that process has to be extraordinarily, extraordinarily long. And it may well be that as a result of that process, it does fit with the financial strategy, but at a certain date that isn't necessarily these dates. So for those reasons, I'm wondering, I could try moving an amendment, but I'm wondering if there would be opposition to the current four and five being replaced by the one that I read out.
What can I suggest in whilst the next speaker is speaking, that you confer with councillor Wetherall and councillor Brown, who are the movers' seconders, with a view to attaining the acceptability of what you're suggesting? And the next speaker is councillor Bezir.
Yes, I was going to support the five recommendations and I still do. However, I think what councillor Thompson has suggested doesn't alter the prospect of us considering this particular facility. What I would like to do is just to get the process started. We have been talking about this for many years, the people at Moskew are really uncertain about the prospect of having a pool out there. There is no question, as Mr Prescott has said, there is a demand out there. I agreed some time ago, the demand was greater in Dunedin, and I think that there is still a great need for it in Dunedin. But certainly in Moskew, need a pool, I would, so I think we should start the process. Look, I just remind councillors, if you look at what's happened with the library in South Dunedin, we started talking about that 20 odd years ago and it still hasn't happened. I'll remind some councillors of what happened with the town hall, we started off with an estimate of around about 20 million and ended up twice that amount. So we've got to start the process and look at what the costs are. I take on board entirely what councillor Vandevos has said, it's important that we do that, and we've got to do that, and we will do that. But let's start the process. So I think that the recommendations as they stand, one, two and three, I can certainly live with. If councillor Thompson comes back with a sensible resolution to the other two, then I'd be happy with that as well. But let's get it underway. I support it.
Councillor Stanch.
I was struggling with these recommendations for the same reasons as councillor Thompson. When I read them the first time, my immediate reaction was, the people in Moskew think they're going to get a pool in the very near future. I don't read it that way. We know that we will not come inside the fiscal, self-imposed fiscal envelope of getting debt under 200 million dollars, core debt, until 2021. So unless we do better than that, for me, making a promise any earlier than 2021 is a promise that we would, in every likelihood, have to break. So I would be very supportive of the resolutions if there was that modification. I have a mother who lives in Moskew, she likes to swim, she really gets upset that she can't swim during the winter, and she's not that mobile, she gets a bit concerned about coming into town. And I think the Moskew Pool, it was the pool that I went to as a kid, it's well past, it's used by date. I don't know whether I entirely agree that we need two pools, but I accept that the Aquatics Working Party has done their work and accept that the recommendation they have there is their best bet at what is required. But if there is a modification to four and five, then I can accept the resolutions, if not, I'll be voting against them.
Councillor Butcher.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'd like to support my good friend, colleague, councillor Wetherall, and I'll be voting for one to five. I'm interested to see what councillor Thompson's putting forward, but I mean, this has come from the community, this project. It is something that the Moskew people and the community board in particular have been telling us for many, many years, I think since I've been here. It's not just been, I'll have a fresh air and grab and said, oh, let's go and build a pool. I think it's fantastic that we've got those numbers doing swimming, Steve, I mean, it's a real credit to you, man, it really is, it's fantastic. And to you too, and Bill Ackland, who put a lot of time and effort into that working party, I'd like to remind people. So I'll be supporting it, I'd like to see it getting, get underway. I mean, if the community come back through the annual plan plus process and say, no, look, we really can't afford to do that, obviously the next council will listen to that. But if the community come back and say, we agree, we do think we need another pool at Moskew, let's get on with it, we'll find the money, development contributions was, you know, suggested before, there will be the money somewhere, maybe it doesn't all have to come from the rates, the poor old rate payer, maybe you could be a little bit more proactive with the rates funding, working party and maybe get some more ITA money on it. So I think I'll be supporting it.
Councillor Stevens.
I've got a concern about this, that this motion, it does set the priorities for investigation here at this council, and I just don't feel like that's appropriate. We've got a new council coming in, I think we should leave it to them to decide what the priority is. They can take forward this information, definitely, but you know, this is fundamental about looking and setting expectation for our community. The Moskew Pool, I know it's tired, I know it needs to be refurnished, and we all know that, but as Pliss says, the community of Moskew want a much better pool, in fact, they'd rather go for the big Rolls Royce, really nice pool, and that is a good thing for them to desire to have. But we always have heard about this crushed space of Moana Pool, which is actually more important, it's actually almost, it's such a struggle to get up there to swim. And I think that's the fundamental issue which Moskew doesn't actually address. And I think we've got an elephant in the room, we've still got a problem, we could spend a huge amount, we could spend nine million, we could spend 15 million plus all the extra costs out at Moskew, and it still doesn't address the problem that we've got at Moana Pool. I don't think we're looking at the energy synergies, I think that there are better energy synergies around the place, I don't think we're looking outside the square, which we really need to, to address this problem. I know school pools are small, and it's not ideal, and it's not flash, and it's not leisure pools with wave pools and all the rest of it, but I still think we can look at expanding some of them a little bit to actually take the pressure off. It's not the Rolls Royce version. I would say, let's not set priority in this council, I'd say leave it to the next council to set priorities. The Moskew community desire a good pool and so they should, let them come forward to us, let the community drive it. Let the community say, we will be prepared to chip in this amount for ourselves if you help out, we can do this, we can do that, leave it for them to drive, and then we should come in, we should match their energy. But, and then to say that, to not look at the city problem because the car park problem is insurmountable, I just don't believe that, it's a car parking problem, we surely can address that. So I think that, leave it for the Moskew community to come forward, I want to get them energised and inspired to contribute something, because to date, they've been reluctant to put their own hands into their pockets in terms of rate payers and pay for some, and I think that we need to leave that challenge for them to see if they will come forward and if they are prepared to commit a little bit, and talk about a little bit, of their own money. And let's look at that car park up at Moana Pool, there's got to be a solution up there, this is ridiculous.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, I need to take you back to, first of all, the paper that we discussed very early on about the Fairfield community, whereby they invested a lot of money into trees and then they required and asked for council for some of that money to be come back to council. Can I just take you all back to amalgamation? When the Moskew district, Moskew borough amalgamated with the city, it was a pristine borough, it had money in the bank and it had airport shares. All those, all that resource came to the city council, was handed over to the city council with nothing asked in return. In the last nine years of my representation of the Moskew area, the main concern for the whole community has been the state of the town and what can they do for the future? And we've been through numerous working parties, numerous public meetings, looking for the outcome of what was the best outcome for the community. So the Moskew community sat back and said, well, let's look at what's best for the community of Dunedin, what's going to meet the swimming needs of Dunedin? And we set a working party in place to look at the needs of the Dunedin community for swimming. And I think it's an insult to actually then say to that working party, you've done a great job, but we gave you the wrong brief. The reality of it is, we asked them to determine what the swimming needs were, and they rightly have brought those back. These recommendations then look now at taking forward their recommendations to look at the financial implications. And I'm too acutely aware of our long-term financial strategy, and I know that for this council to meet its goals, it's got to be very prudent and sit alongside that financial strategy. And I agree with councillor Thompson in the fact that the amendment that he is recommending, both councillor Wetherall and I agree with implementing into these recommendations. And none of these recommendations cement the pool for Moskew. It actually allows the council to do further investigation and then for the community to come forward to say how they are going to contribute. There's, I'm aware, and the community board's aware, there is a willingness in the community to contribute into a partnership with the Dunedin City Council on this facility in their community. And all they want is a starting date, something that they can actually go out and fundraise and provide their share from their community. So they just need certainty, and they don't want it tomorrow, they just want a date, they want a date in the future. So I think this council's got the opportunity now to satisfy that community. And I remind council that especially for those that are aspiring to be mayor, council, Moskew community has a big say in the vote of the mayor, because they vote in Moskew. There's an arts community out there and they vote, they're very high in the percentage of voting. So therefore, you know, they are community minded and they need an opportunity now to have some certainty. So I recommend that you support the recommendations and I fully support the change that councillor Thompson has implemented.
The speakers.
Sir, if I may exercise, I guess, my right of reply ahead of councillor Thompson, I'd give him his, his right to introduce his words, sir. There's just a couple of responses I'd like to make.
Would you want to do that in your right of reply?
Well, I can do it then, that's fine, that's fine. But I want to ensure that councillor Thompson has a chance to speak to the additions, because councillor Brown might.
Well, I think we agree with that. Probably appropriate, given that you've made, you've agreed some changes, that you speak to them, councillor Thompson.
That'd be fine, sir.
Or do you think there's more, I mean, you mentioned what they were, is it?
No, I think I probably do need to speak to them, because they're not quite, as I mentioned them, the nature of politics means that you make compromises. The, so I was suggesting dropping four and five for my replacement four, but the point is made by my colleagues that if I put my four in there, that that enables the financial work to be done. And what will fall out of that falls out of that, but the view of my colleagues, and I'm happy to accept that in the interest of getting a resolution, is that four and five should stay there but be subject, or they become A and B, subject to the findings of four. And the reason for that is, we just need to be clear here, that in three, we're talking about putting some funding into an annual plan, but in four and five, we're putting, talking about funding and timing being put into a long-term plan. So whether that is in year one or year 10 of a long-term plan would very much be dependent upon the outcome of the financial resolution. Indeed, it may be that it's not in any years of that long-term plan, but it also means that some of that work could, I think, be done relatively quickly, and yes, it will end up, of course, in a new term of council, and it's just the way it is. But it would still give a signal that there is a willingness to proceed, subject to it being financially affordable, and that's the key part of it. So I think that if people are happy with that, it's not the perfect resolution, but it's still, that four becomes key. The work needs to be done, and out of that work, there may either be further questions or further reconsiderations, or simply questions around the timing.
Okay, before I ask councillor Wetherall to exercise his right of reply, I'll just speak to this too, and in light of councillor Brown's admonitions, my speech, but anyway. It's quite clear, the way I read this, it's quite clear, and it's been clear right around the table, that we cannot commit to this financially with any certainty right now. But I think what we asked the working party to do was start the process of crystallising a vision for the future, both for aquatic services within the city and aquatic services in Moskew. And I think we did it for a number of reasons, but the whole community needs something to know that they're heading towards, but particularly the Moskew community, I think it's not giving them certainty, but it's giving them something a little more, a little more concrete to aspire to, and it's given them something crystallised to partner up for. We can't very well say, as some people have around the table, we leave it to the community. This council has a responsibility to lead on this. And if we do, we're not saying we're going to, that the rate payer is going to pay for this in the next couple of years, but what we are saying is, yes, this is part of the vision we see into the future, and then we start to have a conversation about how it might be funded, given the restraints of our, of our financial strategy. And I do think there are safeguards in here, I think there's an enormous amount of analysis still to be done. I see here the term in number four, acceptable funding requirements and arrangements. Well, there's a whole lot of stuff, for instance, whether we can find ways of generating income at Moana by other means, whether it's a climb in water, whether it's by saving on fuel to fund extra development. And I think that that's, that's work that has to be done, none of this is, none of this is committed to, none of this here commits us to anything. But I suspect that there has to be a lot more innovative thinking, we'll need to go into this, if we have any hope at all of achieving either a pool, a new pool at Moskew, or an expanded pool at Moana in the next four or five years. But at least if we look forward and crystallise a vision, then we've got something to aspire to and something to plan for. The other area that I'd like to refer to is the one that councillor McTavish raised, and that is restricting ourselves to only considering parking constraints. I think that actually that really precludes any options, I think it's foolish to have it in there, because it precludes any options at all. Because there's no way you can economically, by the look of this report, figure out ways to, to solve just the parking problems in an economical manner. So I would suggest changing the word parking to access constraints, in which case then it can all be looked at in terms of how you get people into Moana Pool or at Moana Pool. And if that, if that were changed, if with the consent of the mover and seaker, then I could, I could support all of those. But I, I can't support it if it restricts the issue of access just to parking because I think that pretty much knocks it on the head for a start because you won't find an economical way of getting around it. So that's, if, if, if you're, if you're mover and seaker are happy to, to change parking in, in the various places to access.
We're agreed, sir.
It's been changed slightly already from what the recommendation was.
Okay, well.
We'll see in a minute. Councillor... Well, Pam, I was that, sir, and thank you for that. It does show the brevity of the report and the timeframe that council gave us to the 3rd of September. Put off the election, we bring us back in three months, we might have a bit more detail and I'll say that again, sir. We had a timeline, we accepted that. The constraints in the brief were given, were very clear, but they certainly weren't as wide as what's been raised today. Transportation or access and energy issues are a given me, that's got to be part of the next phase. But sir, can I just say, I guess I feel a little bit like Gable Reid was in 1861 when he came to prospect for gold. We believe prospecting into the recreational and aquatic facilities for the services of our city for the future is a huge gold strike. And we're talking about not today or tomorrow, we're talking about into the future, the decades ahead. And we thank Mr Prescott for having driven the last number of years to see the capacity constraints in 63, when Moana was pulled, it was built, there was all sorts of issues and we've heard about those on many occasions. Now look at the base, we're jam-packed and that's absolutely superb. And that's an absolute acknowledgement of the right decision at the right time. There's no doubt, sir, that one of the matters that is at risk is the maintenance of the existing facility at Moskill. If time was unlimited and Moskill was able to be maintained at a relative cost, then the pressure might not be that five or 10-year period. That is acknowledged tomorrow. Mr Prescott's given us an absolute commitment that he can keep it, the facility operating. But I say this in absolutely honesty, God help us, if that facility closed, you would overchoke and muddy, wrong word, drown. He's spent my life on lifesaving. We, we would make it very difficult to run an effective and efficient and a meaningful facility at Moana if we, only facility was up the hill. So the scope that needs to be taken is given. The working party accept that. The timeframes, and I accept the resolution or the additions from councillor Thompson, councillor Brown himself. We, as a working party, took a step to drive forward. We would be less responsible if we were open-ended without some desire. But we do say in one part, five and 10 years, and then we say next year or the year after. So it's probably happy to accept those, sir. So all I would ask is that the council support the principle, allow the consultation with Moskill. My final comment is this, sir. If the Moskill and the greater community can contribute over a million dollars to a recreational facility by way of a community playground and the facilities that, I look forward and hope to be part of supporting what they can do in the future for a recreational facility that will service our great city.
So I've asked Pam to put it up on the screen so that we can see the various parts of it and I'm happy.
Can I just check this, because I mean, I mentioned 1B, the council was aware that that's improved. It's been greater.
I'll give everyone a moment or two to digest it. Now. Excuse me, with the word access to go into 1B rather than parking. Well, you note that it's been reworded. If existing parking shortages is caused by lack of viable transport routes, I, I can live with that. But I actually think it's, would be clearer just to change the word parking to access.
No objection, sir.
And...
We believe that widens the scope on the concerns expressed to the other issues we need to consider.
Access issues rather than access shortages then?
Access constraints. That's, that's the wording in 1B. Further down, it's, in 3B, it's access constraints and in, in five, it's, single line, it is two, access constraints. It's the same phrase in each case. So.
Remove parking from the centre.
Now, if you don't, well, you can leave that, rest of that at all. Bye. So is everyone, is there anyone who wishes me to take this clause by clause? Or do, is there anyone who wishes to support some part of it and not another, in which case I can take it?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the changes to be made.
Right. Well, I'm, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Record it, please.
No. And I'd like to like a division, please. You're embarrassed, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry?
I'd like a division, please.
I've just, I've just, it's just been settled. I've said it's carried.
So you won't accept a division?
Because we've finished the vote.
Okay, well, can I have my vote recorded, sir?
Yes, yes, you can, sir.
I can, but can't have a division.
Could I do a subsequent motion relating to the wood burner? I know it's on the understanding, but I actually think it's an issue that came out of the Aquatics Working Party. I've provided to Pam and hopefully she's got it up there about the wood burner that, that reports back for this next annual plan. And I just, I just think it's one that if, if we find these things out, we should actually put the movement in the process immediately, acknowledging that I think staff are on to it.
Right. Thank you. Moving on to item 21.
It's a motion.
I was thinking of something else.
The motion, it's, yeah, I'm moving it. So seek more detail around the proposed LPG wood conversion of the boiler at Moana, including projected capital costs.
I was going to second, but perhaps change the word wood to biomass because I think it's...
Okay. Take it to councillor Stevenson. Um, discussion. Want to speak to it? I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Yes, carry it. Right, we move on to item 21. Thank you. To improve safety specifically on the roads that run through the centre of town. They happen to be state highways, or two of them do. So that was the, that was the brief request we, we made of NZTA. And I understand that this is the, the end of a fairly exhaustive process in determining what the options are to achieve that end. So I'm going to open it up now for, do you wish, any of you wish to preface questions with any more context or?
Just in terms of the report, there's effectively two parts to it. We may have covered that off. It does deal with the, the council resolutions that were passed. And the two parts relate to the question around the short-term parking changes and there's been some work done about that. And so resolutions is noting that. And the second bit is in response to the longer-term question and that's why we've got Simon Underwood from the NZTA here who have identified that longer-term option. So there are two parts.
Okay, Simon, through the, I'm speaking primarily on the long-term planning aspect. First of all, while I'm, while I'm here, and there's two reasons for that. The first part is in response to the council's direction to give us a steer that we had to rethink how we manage cycling on our, on our network and in hindsight, I can obviously thank council for that direction. The second reason that I'm here is that during the course of that work, there became a realisation that we can do a whole lot better. That is a, there is a superior arrangement out there that we, that the city is willing and NZTA is willing, that we can do. And I say that because Dunedin, although it's a hilly city, there are large areas of residence on the flat with South Dunedin, around the Lower Harbour and North East Valley, which can all link into a wider network strategy. And even the hills themselves, that they are limited for some folk, but they're not limited for other folk. And there's also what's transpired is that there's a lot of support out there in terms of riding projects I can evolve with. The amount of submissions that we've had on this has far outweighed anything that I've been involved with in recent times, if at all. When we started off, our first brief was to look at short-term improvements. And I feel that we have made a considerable improvement in terms of what we've done through the widening of the cycle lanes, through the bollards, through the initial parking changes. Those parking changes not intended to be wholesale answer, but to really dealing with specific pinch points or concerns that we had around the existing cycle lanes. But that said, we do feel that there is scope, so we've gone from sort of here to here. We do feel that it's got to go quite a lot higher. In doing that, we've been looking outside of New Zealand and what's been happening around the globe in terms of the larger American cities and European cities and even our neighbours, Australia. And from that, through that, we have seen that there are better avenues that we can take. Because even though that we have done these short-term improvements, what we still have, we still have interaction with bus stops. There's still car parking manoeuvring going on within the cycle lanes. There is still the, the door opening within the cycle lanes, although of course we now have more room to play with than what we had before. There is still the ability for motorists to enter into the traffic lane, into the cycle lane at any point. And at intersections, we still have left-turning traffic, can't turn across the cycle lane. What we've seen through examples called SPF as the acronym or separated bike facility, essentially a cycle lane that's separated in some way, curb, bollards, planters in some way from the traffic lane. And what that does, it takes away the, the interaction with bus stops, car parking, the door ring. Motors can't get in there at any time. And at intersections, traffic still must turn across the cycle lane, but through the tropical ice. And most of the, most of the intersections along the one-way pier are controlled by tropical ice, but able to hold up the turning traffic while cyclists going through and vice versa, to remove that conflict. So those are the key points where the next big gains are made. So certainly do feel there's room for improvement. Looking ahead in terms of where we want to get to, or pressing where we are now really, we, we're not about developing a, a single project. NZTA is very much focused on working with council to develop a whole of inner-city network solution. It's not, for us, it's not just about the one-way pier. So that, that is our end goal. We're not, we're actually quite away from implementation yet. Our, our first goal is to get a, some sort of inner-city strategy bettered down so that we all know where we are working to. In terms of future planning, the most likely timeframe that we'd be implementing would be in the next National Land Transport Programme, which is 2015, 16 and three years following that. But this, so we want to use this time now to bed down that strategy. In our working group, which is Ron and Sarah beside me, Robert and Hank from Spokes, and we've also brought in Axel Wilkie, consultant with Beastrada. We went through a, a bundle of options to look at. We didn't, in fact, it would have suited me just fine if we didn't have the one-way pier, to be honest. That would have been an ideal solution for me. But the reality is, we're, the more that we looked at the network, the more that we looked at where cyclists are coming from and where they're going to and the linkages that they have, whether it's from North East Valley to the universities or to the hospital, to the inner city, or even to the harbour, or to connect through to the South Dunedin cycleway. There aren't a lot of route choices for cyclists out there. We've got George Street, which was just as busy with buses, and a huge amount of parking interaction going on in there, or the one-way pier. So all the options that we looked at did tend to come back to that one-way pier. So we're accepting that the one-way pier is a vital component to any future network. We then looked at differing options on the one-way pier and there's two that emerge to the top of the heap, if you like. And to get the ball rolling, well, this one, this, this paper's all, all about is to really get that ball rolling on the consultation process. Because we really need to find a solution for the one-way pier if we're to bring about a solution to a wider central network.
Thank you. Thank you, Simon. Now, I'll go, I'll open it up for questions for clarification of the report, councillor Stevenson.
Okay, I'm looking at page, I don't know if you've got the same page numbering as we have you do. Okay, so it's at the top, it says 21.28.
Cross-section?
Yeah, it's a cross-section picture. And I see, I can see four lanes of traffic, moving traffic, and I can't see any car parking at all. Is that correct? Is there no car parking anywhere on this?
That's correct, but I need to put in an apology there. When we were looking at our options, there were two cross-sections that were visely important to us. There's only one cross-section on this, this report for each option. Sorry. I'm losing a cold in.
So we, we are going to get some block cross-sections drawn up as well. But I would point out that at the moment, there's no parking at the intersections anyway. So the fact there's no parking there is no change.
So these are the intersection pictures?
Yes.
Okay. So like, if I was to imagine, what I'm seeing when I look at the map, there will be some parking somewhere. I mean, I just get the impression from the cross-sections that there won't be any car parking anywhere, but there will be.
Yes. So, so again, I apologise for the absence of the second cross-section. The, the key difference is, so there's a mid-block cross-section and that was the one that's missing here and we're really to mention what the cycle lane or separated bike facility would look like. And then at the intersection, we had the two done because we needed to know for traffic flow that it will work. So we needed to know that at the intersections, we can have separated turn lanes still because if we didn't have that, we would risk it not working for traffic flow. But the difference is between the two, mid-block, cycle facility is much wider. So mid-block, there is room for the cycle lane plus three traffic flows, if you like, or three traffic lanes, one of which will be, will be parking on the opposite side and the other two will be the traffic lanes.
Okay, so I think at the latest stage we'll get that, your impact on parking, but that will come later. And when I'm looking at the map on page 21.31, I can see the bidirectional red line, which is good. But I'm surprised to also see the blue line so that, I thought that we, that one of the options was just to have the bidirectional one that goes down and I'm surprised to see that we've got the blue lane option remaining at the same time. So do both appear simultaneously? And I'm sort of a bit confused about that. I think it would be confusing for a cyclist to know which exactly one they should be on.
There's, there's a lot of things that we need to bed down. So fundamentally, there's two options out there. There is a, a single SPF and that would be on Covenant Street, that would be bi-directional. Or two SPFs and that would be one on each other, one-way pier flowing in the same direction as the one-way pier. Or the, for the unidirectional ones, if you like, so that's on both of the one-way pier. The existing cycle lane will come out so that it wouldn't be there.
Okay, so then on page 21.31, we've got a red line there, that's a bidirectional, which is great. And the blue one would come off. No, the blue one stays on as well.
That is an option. With a bidirectional one, it then becomes an option as what do we do with the cycle lane that is on the unaffected routes, if you like? In either case, if we, it would either come off completely or we would shift it to so that it was also on the right-hand side of the road, so that it tied up. But there's an option.
So like, another, there almost needs to be like a third map with just the red line, the blue line's gone altogether and that's... blue line's gone altogether and that's an option as well.
I see that as part of the optioneering there. That's a, the secondary level of optioneering.
Thank you for those questions, I fully understand now, thank you.
How's the cops?
Thank you, just clarification and a question if I may. Clarification on your recommendation one, which notes, which says noting that following further consultation with businesses, parking changes at seven sites will proceed, including around the hospital block. More in the wording really, you go to consult but you're still going to proceed. So what if there's enough resistance, shall we say, from those businesses along there? I know some saw the diagrams in the ODT the other day, Friday or Thursday, for the first time and they were quite alarmed by it. And one or two that contacted me, I said, well, look, you will have a chance to submit to this and there'll be consultation. Are you saying, you're not suggesting, are you, that you'll have that consultation but the parking at seven sites will still proceed? I mean, they might change your mind?
Yes, what we've done is we actually have consulted with a lot of businesses on those seven sites, including the AA.
Just to be clear, the, the separated bicycle facility is the subject of recommendation two. What you're talking about in terms of recommendation one relates to a series of changes to the current parking layout that has previously been to council and seek back to consult with businesses. So there are two, so if you receive calls about lack of consultation around the bicycle...
Just a bit of initial fear that they're going to have no access to their building.
Yeah, well, the consultation on that, just to be clear, will come out of part of that two. Number one, which you refer to, consultation is secured around specific parking changes and they've been consulted.
All of them along there.
The ones relating to the seven sites that are in the report.
I think you've answered the question anyway. Automobile Association have been part of all this consultation, have they of your, you didn't mention in the group that, together, and for that matter taxis, I mean, people like that that use, use the area.
The AA have had the opportunity to comment and they haven't submitted any comments on the proposals.
Right. About deliveries, people that have to deliver into these.
Well, what, what we've done is we've consulted with the businesses and we expect the businesses to take that into account in terms of their comments that they've submitted back to us. And you will note in the following pages in the appendices that some of the feedback has been missed.
Just being what, master?
Can I just note that Ron's talking about the changes in parking, specific, not the cycle lanes? Yeah.
Councillor Z.
Well, it's this consultation that I am concerned about and while I accept that you've given the Automobile Association the opportunity to submit and they haven't picked up on it, I think it's important that we go back to them and it's really important, given the lessons that we learned with the last time we changed the parking strategy, where we advertise what we're going to do and we had some expectation that because people didn't submit, that they agreed with what we were doing, it's really important that we ask people to submit and if they don't, we should have some very good reasons as to why they're not. So I, while I support the direction you're going, I think this is great, it's not an issue about...
Is there a question here, councillor?
Oh, sorry. The question is, the question is, will you be targeting submitters?
Hunting them down.
Again, I think there's two avenues of consultation here. The, the seven parking changes that arises from work under the short term improvements. When we came to council last time, there's direction to go back specifically to the hospital and otherwise get on with those improvements. The, the next round of consultation will be on, well, what was in the ODT, the, the two one way pier options and that will be a case of, we will be thinking about who we need to consult with and make sure that no one is, is left off from that and the AA will, will be very much a part of that. I've promised them that in a letter just recently, this last, last week.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, councillor Van der Wiss?
I've been discussing the cycleway situation with the blokes that run the cycle shop office at the railway station. And the bloke that runs it and some of the people that were in there suggested that cycle lanes actually give cyclists a false sense of security and that since most accidents happen at intersections anyway, which are not separable, that in fact, they, the cyclists, and these are seriously heavy duty cyclists, didn't support cycle lanes. Does this surprise you? Have you had feedback like this before?
Back in, back in December last year, after, soon after Dr Heath's death, we had about 60 submissions and they were all of a nature of get on and do something without being specific as to what something was. When we had a second round and invited comments with a few lead questions, we had about another 60 emails. By and large, they were all very much about get on and put, do provide better infrastructure within the central city. There were a few people that felt that cyclists simply, simply shouldn't be there. Overall, there's an overwhelming demand to do something for the, the roading cyclists, the true, well, call them roadies. But they tend to be a whole lot more confident, they'll cycle down towards the drive-in rather than be on the cycle lane. They will, that's good. The cycle lanes facilities that we are looking at providing is to appeal to those who cycle for commuting as opposed to recreational race riding or training. I can well understand the training cyclists wouldn't, wouldn't be that excited about using them, but our aim is to make it a whole lot more amenable for the university students or just general commuters to get to them from.
So you accept then that the proposed cycle lanes actually won't be used by certain groups of cyclists? You've mentioned the hard out racing types, you're hoping the commuters will use it. Experience in Germany is that despite all the cycle lanes there, the commuters use the main roads because they were fast. My real question though is the false sense of security that's been claimed by people in the bike shop. And I'm talking about one character individual who's 26 years old and has been to ED 25 times. He's not Dutch. He figures he's overdue for another trip to ED. Intersections happening, accidents happening at intersections which are not separable. Do you accept that in fact, most accidents do happen at intersections?
And first off, I've been just being that the sense of self, false sense of security, I would, I would agree with that. And we have had submissions, some of those submissions were from people saying that after Dr Heath's death, there's no way they're going to cycle again until we do something better. So I would actually agree that in terms of what we, where we were, that probably were inducing a false sense of security. In terms of the intersections, I have, I have all that analysis there, I don't have it off the cuff except to say that yes, there was a fatality at the Adzak Castle Street, but the door opening one was mid-block with Dr Heath's death. The jam brewer beforehand was past the Albany Street intersection, could be, could be mid-block there, is a door opening event again. And the, and the other fatality that we had, sorry, I can't recall the person's name, that was a mid-block fatality.
Are you aware that in the transportation strategy, there are five levels of accident and the very top one is intersections and the bottom one is cyclists? Are you aware of that chart in the transportation strategy?
I'm not aware of that chart.
Okay. The, this, this proposal here, we're talking in two about the, the two preferred options. Is this the same proposal that the ODT featured on the front page with the news that there would be parking losses ranging from 200 to 400?
It is.
Why is it that the ODT had to go out and count the number of parks that were going to be lost? And why is it that there's no mention of that number in this whole detailed report?
It's because we are at a, in our minds, we are at an earlier planning stage as what is that we want? We are mindful of parking, that's why we have ranked the options away that we have in terms of the council report because that is something that council are looking for. So we, we are aware that one option has more parking loss than the other option. We hadn't gone out and counted parking at that time, we, we knew it was going to be significant and a significant issue for the city.
So why is there that significance in this report? You could have read this report, gone right through it and thought, oh, they're just moving a few cat backs around, there's some pictures there. It took the ODT to actually count them and realise there's 200 of them. Why is that not in the report?
And in terms of the number of parks, that, that's a fair remission and we'll make sure that is in the consultation, but in terms of the fundamentals that parking loss, parking would have to be lost on one side of the road to accommodate the SPF, we, we thought that that was a major key point that people would pick up, pick up on regardless whether we had the number of parks in there or not.
Okay. Next question then relates to the cost to the DCC of actually losing, say, let's go for the lesser of the two, losing 200 prime parks in the middle of a city. Do you know how much it will cost the DCC to lose in terms of lost revenue, gross revenue? Do you know how much it will cost to lose that revenue?
The, yes, we do know that, it was, some work was done previously, it's not 200 paid parks obviously, but there are a portion of the parks which are metered. So for the Cumberland Street option, which is the two-way, the estimate based on revenue from a full financial year is about 250,000. And for the two-way option, so the, the second option, it's about 300,000. That's a gross cost and one of the things that we have talked about is if there is the cycleways go in, we will be, need to look at the provision of parking services in this, in the area. We would anticipate moving some of those parking meters around to provide for the medium term parking and other things, so it would generate some revenue back. But that work hasn't been done because it's still at a concept stage.
Okay, so just to clarify, if we lose the small number of parks, the 200 rather than the 400, we're looking at over half a million dollars worth of gross revenue lost from parking?
No, no, sorry, no, it's, numbers I've got are 250,000 for the Cumberland Street, which is the two-way and 300,000 if we did the other option. That's because the parking is not, the paid parking is not evenly spread between the two one-way systems.
Okay, so we're looking at quarter of a million dollars loss for, for, for either option and a bit more for the two-way.
Yeah, that's, that's the gross cost if we don't replace that paid parking elsewhere in the facility, which we'd, we'd likely to do.
Right. And given that we're going to lose at least quarter of a million dollars one way or the other, 300 the other way, where is that budgeted? Where, where would that money be coming from?
It hasn't been budgeted because this is a proposal being put forward by NZTA knowing that it was going to have the consultation to be reported back and it's certainly effective that the council need to consider, both in terms of the funding impact and the parking changes and we might need to make in the surrounding areas if this cycle facility goes in. It's further work that needs to be done.
Thank you.
Councillor Tom.
Just following up on a couple of councillor Van der Wiss's questions. The notion that separated cycle facilities increase the risk for cyclists because it removes a sense of danger from them. Based on the international evidence, are you able to tell me whether or not cyclists are more safe if there is a yellow line between them and heavy traffic or more safe if there is a completely separated bike lane at which heavy traffic cannot access?
I'll answer that in two parts. Not in Dunedin but in New Zealand, I am aware of cycling fatalities where a car has entered into the cycle lane and killed a cyclist. So that's in New Zealand. Looking overseas, cities like Portland who have invested heavily in cycling infrastructure have, one, lifted the number of cyclists and two, improve the overall safety for those cyclists.
There's no reason to suggest that we are any more stupid than the average inhabitant of Portland?
Don't ask.
You don't have to answer that question yet. But my second, my second, my second question relates to parking and the apparent loss of revenue. Do we have any evidence as to if we shift parks or remove paid parks in a city that people turn around and go home as opposed to going and finding another park they need to put their money into?
Well, certainly the, the evidence when we made the last set of major changes to the parking is that people redistributed themselves. As a result of the last set of changes, we had commuters, our parkers moving further out and we had people, longer stay parks moving out as well. The experience is that people will redistribute and certainly it's something that I think we'll need to work through. The loss of 200 parks, we'll need to think carefully about how they might, we might better redistribute, redistribute them or account for the various parking needs that still exist because you've still got different types of parkers, commuters, short stay, long stay and that's something that the parking strategy working, but it had to work through. And I'd envisage a similar bit of work being done.
But it's, it's simply overly simplistic to suggest that removing those parks removes the, the revenue as opposed to the revenue being redistributed into other parks?
Yes, I mean, as I said before, the gross cost is if we just took everything out and didn't replace those parking meters in some other locations. And one of the things we would need to work through is the, working with the businesses and the community about where that, where those parking meter and here we can provide for them.
Councillor Matt Chevish.
Thank you, Bishop. I have two questions which are pertaining more to the short term changes. The Countdown and, Countdown and New World supermarket, we've heard there has been a decision made not to proceed with the changes here. Why is, is, what is the reasoning for that?
This will be in relation to the, the bollards. The reason that we have put the bollards where they are now and I've been promised by another staff member that there'll be more to go in at Jedy Street in about two weeks' time. The reason that we can do that at those sites is because there is a separate full left turn lane, in fact, that's the main reason for them because the cycle lane was between two lanes of traffic. That doesn't exist to the same extent at the New World and Countdown supermarkets, so sort of came to view that motorists have to cross, there's no, there's no way around that and we didn't think we'd be able to control them any better than what they are now or in an effective way.
In relation to the parking changes adjacent to the university bookshop and that area there, I note that the proposal still retains five, five minute car parks out of those, those businesses and it just strikes me as an area, I mean, certainly as a cyclist, I've had numerous really close calls there and it just strikes me as an area that even if there was to, one, one of them, the closest one to the lights be removed, it would give cyclists and those people who want to cut across and park for five minutes, more room to move, but I appreciate there must be some thinking behind it, so I value your self-comment on why those have been retained.
This is probably one of our more difficult sites because there are not many alternatives for the demand that's required there. There is a mixture of demand for P5s to go to the New Zealand post boxes and then also people who want to go to the university bookshop, they're after longer term parks. So what we've decided to do was we wanted to try and avoid having a mix of parking there, so what we have done is a little bit of reverse psychology, we're actually putting more P5s in than what we believe we need. And then our intention is to monitor that and the idea is that when someone arrives to use the P5, they aren't having to stop in the traffic lane or sorry, the park, the cycle lane and having to reverse in and some of them aren't very good at reversing. So they're partly in the cycle lane anyway when they're parked, the whole idea is they can arrive and they... The whole idea is they can arrive and they should have a choice of probably two parks and they can get in quickly and they can stop quite clear of the lanes. Now, our intention is, and we've spoken to all of those people, including the landlord, our intention is to monitor those results, see how it works. There is a request for longer-term parking and what we want to do is get those results and then take that back and have discussion with those people to see obviously whether it's worked or not. And if it has worked, possibly provide some longer-term parking which possibly will be down Albany Street. It's just, it's just, there are lack of alternatives there. So it's a little bit of reverse psychology, but we believe it's worth doing the trial without a major expense.
And I appreciate you guys have expertise and I'm glad to hear that it's going to be monitored because I have nervousness about it. In terms of the, you talk about the fact that hook turns will be considered at other locations in 2013, 14. It doesn't give me a whole lot of confidence that they're going to be implemented in 2013, 14. Are there plans in place to implement those intersection interventions? Or is that simply something that's going to be a case of on-go monitoring and no action?
I'm not sure how to answer this one. The hook turn that we have put in at Anzac and Castle Street, we put in because we were undertaking works there and we were able to do that. In fact, that request followed a previous council meeting asking for that hook right turn into Stuart Street. So we had a request, we had a need and we had opportunity, so that's what happened. If I was to look across the network now, I don't think we have upcoming works of similar scale. So I think that will be a case of pursuing it. Should there be a heightened need to do it, but at this stage, no. Our focus, I guess, is starting to move towards a longer-term planning work.
councillor Noon.
I'm happy to move the recommendations when you're ready.
Right, okay, there's another question here, councillor Tom, just to read.
There is a question, I'm sitting pondering and wondering if, Ron, you can remember when you had, well, at the time it sounded like a radical view, but Hillside Road all the way out to Sinclair and I think Kaike Valley Road at the time, you took away lanes and then put this big zigzag all the way down the middle. Do you remember that?
Mr. Turner.
Kaike Valley Road, I remember that quite clearly.
Well, it's the same Hillside Road all the way down and then along to Sinclair. And I wondered if in your ponderings of yours rather than mine, in your working group, did you ever consider that, there's two ways of looking, another way of looking at this is to forget cycle lane there and cycle lane there, doors opening, all the rest of it, and do the same right down the one-way street system and put the bikes in the middle. Just put the bikes in the centre. Just before you do that, there is also the possibility that you can look at Crawford Street as it's going south and reducing it or taking a lane out of that altogether and using, have no bikes down Cumberland Street but put cycles down on that road because the status is not as busy as the road north, am I right?
Two clarifications, I guess. The first point with cycling in the middle or Hillside Road treatment, that is a flush median and it can only be used for purpose of traffic turning.
They have to use the same principle.
Part of the key attraction with separated cycle lanes is to make sure that traffic can't weave across there. So, and traffic needs to be able to weave between the two lanes, so no, we haven't pursued that one. In terms of Cumberland Street, south of Queen's Garden, so the one-way south. And I'll also clarify that both the parking assessment that the O D T did and what we have done, which corroborates that around 385 parks for the both or 185 parks of Cumberland Street only, is effectively from Burlington Street north. And that's because south of Burlington Street or south of Retro Street, there is Vogel Street. And that is part of the South Dunedin planning and it is certainly an option for cycle improvement, either Crawford Street, Vogel Street or Cumberland Street. So that is why we haven't put a proposal out there at this time. Because Vogel Street in itself could be an attractive alternative to the highway. Although that said, and we also recognise that there are three lanes on Cumberland Street heading south. And if we need more road space, that is an option that is there. But we haven't developed a thinking on that sufficiently at this time.
Right, now councillor Stevens.
Sorry, I'm still looking at the map on 21.31 with the bidirectional. I'm concerned about the continuation of the painted line on the road that's not separated and outside the U B S where there was an accident. Would it not, and this is your second or third option, would it not be safer without the lined cycleway at all if we were going to do the bidirectional, take out the painted line on the road? Because I worry about accidents outside the U B S predominantly from people opening the doors of cars. And I'm also worried about you will need to change sides as you cycle and that causes me some concern as well. Because I think that transition from one side of the road to the other would be incredibly dangerous. Is it not possible to think about taking, for option two, those painted lines right off altogether, take that unseparated cycle lane option out?
If there was option two that progressed and that's the bidirectional one on Cumberland Street, the cycle lanes on the unaffected sections of the one-way pier would in the very least have to shift across to the right-hand side just so that they all linked up. So that's if they stayed. There are different schools of thought and that's where we would look for further public opinion as to what they think. Some people will say, if you've got a really good facility and you've invested on Cumberland Street, why do anything else? Others will say, take another view and say, well, the safest treatment is still to have a cycle lane on the sections of road which don't have any speed. So.
Have a door there?
It's a secondary option, I think, but in either way, if there was one, it would be on the right-hand side.
Okay, thank you.
Right, councillor Noon, you're moving and councillor Wilson's seconding. The recommendations on page 21.2?
Yes, can I just speak to it briefly? Firstly, I just want to acknowledge N Z T A's contribution to the process so far, taking the lead and working with the city in collaboration with the city and also with spokes. We also appreciate the work that's happened on the Carriageway and the Anzac Avenue, Castle Street intersection as well and the various other parts of the network that have had bollards established. I think this discussion has been a little bit premature in terms of the loss of parking. Councillor Vander Wiss has raised it and a number of others have spoke about it as well. And I'm talking in relationship to the N Z T A preferred, the two preferred options that are effectively on the table. My understanding with the parking is that we have a degree of capacity in the Great King Street car park. And my understanding also is that to try and absorb that capacity, if we do end up losing the number of parks and it looks like it's probably going to be a fait de complete, is that some tweaking to the Great King Street island. So currently at the moment, you can't turn right into the Great King Street car park. So there can be some roading improvements done there to allow that, which would make that option much more desirable for people looking for parks in and around this sort of high-demand area for parking. So I think I would much rather us have the discussion further down the track. Once we've had the consultation, once N Z T A and D C C and spokes come back with a firm position or firm option and then we can probably work more on those alternatives to absorb the parking demand in and around this area. And I suppose just finally, I have to pick up councillor Vander Wiss, I'm sorry, for the suggestion that if you look at the five key areas of concern in the city with regards to road safety. And councillor Vander Wiss said the top of the list is intersections, which is quite right. But the detail within that is that that's urban intersections and it also includes cyclists that have come to grief at intersections. So there is a component in that ranking. Number one, there's safety issues in Dunedin and intersections, but it includes a number of cycling accidents at intersections. Just wanted to clarify that.
Further discussion, councillor McTavish.
Well, just to follow on, I don't want to add much, but I think that for, as a cycling councillor, I want to thank N Z T A for really seizing the opportunity that this provides and really looking outside of what we traditionally have done as a city in terms of finding solutions that are both workable and that will improve both the livability of Dunedin as well as contributing to transport and safety outcomes. So I think that's really neat and I wanted to acknowledge that. I also though wanted to just say that, you know, as fantastic as it is that we've got this project going up for consultation, going through all the right hoops in order to get it into that critical funding round. 2015, 16 is still a long way away for cyclists. And in terms of improvements that we can make between now and then to the infrastructure, I don't think that they are wasted improvements. You know, the idea of hook turns, they're as valid now as they were when they were first mooted. And if they save a life between now and, you know, taking councillor Vander Wiss and councillor Noon's point about these intersections, it is critical that we manage the potential conflicts at those intersections. And if the hook turns are able to be put in as part of that, to reduce that, the potential for people coming to grief at those intersections, I really, I would support those being done in the interim. I think the other point that I just wanted to make is around the parking issue. I support everything that has been said by councillor Noon and by the staff. But I think it's also relevant to note that in the event that we do get significant numbers of people, as our surveys have indicated, taking up cycling, once the safety concerns have been alleviated, we probably will see a reduction in the amount of traffic congestion and the amount of demand for car parking in our city. Now, that may mean that we need to provide some additional parking of different types or space for parking of different types. But I would note that that requires significantly less space. And therefore, I don't think that we will see such a significant problem as we're currently envisaging with that particular issue. So great initiative, really support it for the purpose of consultation. Livability outcomes, safety outcomes, carbon emission outcomes, health outcomes, social outcomes. This is a win-win-win-win-win for the city and I really, I thoroughly endorse it for the purpose of consultation.
councillor Vander Wiss.
This is a lose-lose-lose for everybody in this city. We lose at minimum 200 car parks plus a few more in number one, probably 400. We lose quarter of a million dollars in gross revenue. We force people to redistribute. Currently, because of the cutbacks that have been happening ongoing in this city for many years, people have been progressively forced up into parking in the green belt. We've stopped them parking in parts of the green belt, I'm thinking particularly around Alveston, I drive around there every day. And now they're parking outside my house in Roslin and walking down into town because there are no parks. The business about there being parking capacity in town certainly doesn't seem to be supported by the number of people that are having to park now kilometres away from central and having to walk into town. We lose the car parks, we lose the revenue, we force people to distribute. Some cyclists won't use these lanes anyway and these lanes don't separate at the most dangerous part of the road, which is the intersections. So in terms of what do we get for all of the spending? We lose, 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 lose. I'm going to be voting against the whole lot, it makes no sense at all.
Further speakers, councillor Stans.
I'm going to be supporting the resolutions and I think we have a terrible fascination in the city with the need for car parks. I have to remind myself, as I'm the driver of a car, when I get mad and I can't find a car park.
On your bike mate, on your bike.
This is actually silly. And the comment that has been made by councillor Vander Wiss that there are people parking up near his house and walking down to the city says there is potential to improve our public transport. Then you do not need to bring your car to the centre of the city. Here we're talking about two major issues. One, the desire by a much greater number of people to use active transport modes, which I agree with. I remember back to my childhood when it wasn't the price of fuel that stopped people from having cars. It was the fact that cars were extremely expensive and people buy it and enjoy it by it. It's only more recently with cheap Japanese imports that people have leapt into cars in an ever bigger numbers. And that's having a tremendous impact on our infrastructure as a city. So there is a growth in the number of people who like to cycle. I'd like to cycle. I won't cycle currently because I don't feel safe. And the studies that have been done clearly state that if you provide safe infrastructure, then more people will cycle. If people feel safe, they'll use active transport. The intersections, as I understand it, won't be as significant a problem because we are going to have traffic lights that allow the hook turn. So the cyclists can cross the traffic at the intersection without having to lane weave in amongst trucks, buses and people who can't see a cyclist. So I don't accept the fact that this makes cycling more dangerous. It actually makes it an awful lot more safe through the bottleneck that we have in the centre of our city with the limited space between the hills and the harbour. So I think it's a no-brainer. I think it opens up the opportunities to grow the city's image as a great place to live, as a great small city. We have to look at these options as being positive for our community, not negative. We look to the future, not the past, so I support that.
councillor Stevens.
Okay, I thank you very much for your work on these options. Cycling on the one-way system is by far not ideal. Even having it separated makes it a little bit better for me, but it's still far from ideal. I think that when this goes up for consultation, you do need to be a bit more clearer about the car parking. You know, they need to know the results of that. You also seem to arrive on the cycle lanes as if by the TARDIS sort of zooms you in there. I mean, how do you connect to North Road? And that connectivity needs to go right through to North Road and I think that needs to be clearer. I think people should be encouraged to submit on variations, taking off the painted lines altogether and that needs to be encouraged. But I think there's an option here that we haven't even considered and it's not here. And that's having no cycle ways on the one-way system whatsoever. Mr. Underwood sort of indicated that that would actually be the ideal situation. But to cycle through the Botanic Gardens, to, I'm sorry.
The speaker has just said that something hasn't been considered when it was considered and discounted. And Simon's already talked about that and I think that's an unfair statement, misstatement of fact. The other roads were considered, that was part of the council resolution that we put and it has been discounted. They had to come back to the one-ways.
I'll uphold the point of order to the extent that I would request that you stick to the proposals that are in front of us that are the result of the analysis that's been, I suspect to be.
Okay, well, speaking to the identified two preferred options. And what my opinion is that cycling on the one-way system is by far not ideal. Okay, so I will agree to it for the purposes of consultation. Though I look at other streets like Castle Street, quiet streets and I think that we need to think broader. That's just my view. streets, and I think that we need to think broader. That's just my view.
Councillor Thompson.
I welcome this. It is a further step in the right direction. It is one of many steps that will have to be taken over time and as we can afford them. But I feel enthused about the fact that over the last three years, we have advanced cycle safety significantly in terms of the timeframe that the city previously envisaged we should be doing it. I had an email from my good friend Calvin Oden over the weekend telling me that this was about a war on motorists. I thanked him for his advice and reassured him that I would give it the same degree of respect that he gives mine. This is, as councillor Staines says, also about what we want the city to be in the future. If we want to attract young professionals to stay here, many of whom in fact are much more urban in their orientation than perhaps some of us have been, then we are going to have to provide a central city that adds to that attraction, that feels like a place they want to be and that enables them to operate and operate safely in the way in which they want to. It adds to the brand of this city and we need to add to the brand of this city if we want to be one of the world's great small cities. There are exemplars overseas that steer us in the appropriate direction and give us some glimpses of what the city could look like and how it could operate if we're prepared to continue as we can afford to over time to do so. I'm also a retailer and I think that I can say that retailers are, you know, rather like farmers. It's either raining too much or it's not raining enough. And they're about like that about parking. But I can recall when parks got taken out of George Street to enable trees to be grown. And that was going to be the end of civilisation as we knew it. And yet, George Street still operates as a retail shopping precinct. It's a much more attractive retail shopping precinct than it ever was before. And the retailers still get their customers. Yes, customers have to think differently about where they might park their vehicles. And one of the little ironies about this is that it's often cheaper to park in the parking building than it is to park on the street. And, you know, perhaps a few more people need to take that into consideration. So I welcome this. I don't think it is anywhere near where we need to be ultimately, but it sure as hell is some big steps in the right direction. And I look forward to the consultation process and I hope that the groups that have been engaging with us around this will continue to do so because it's vital for our city that they do continue to do so.
Further speakers. Councillor Brown.
My position on this paper is quite clear and I support the recommendations. And I support them for a number of reasons. The first one is that it gives a health and safety, a safer city. But I also support them knowing that I'm not going to be sitting around this council table facing the ear of the community about the loss of car parking. So from that point of view, I don't need to worry about that consideration. But I also can remember when I had to chair the working party that had to deal with the ear of the community on the last parking consideration. It was made quite clear to me at one meeting, which I thought was quite humorous, was these people said, look, cars don't go shopping, people do. And so therefore, you know, I think the community has to look at what is best for the community as a whole, what is best for the city as a whole. And I think this is a step in the right direction. I'm going to support it.
Councillor Wilson.
Just, Your Worship, when we come to the end of the trainee man, if we're making any recommendations, I think councillor Brown's going to have some time on his hands. And I hope that we can make sure that the parking group can co-opt because I'm sure he's wanting to help again.
Thank you. I take it that's not your right of reply?
That's what I...
Oh, that's right. You're quite right. Any further speakers? Well, I'll address this a little. I agree with the many speakers or several speakers who have talked about the many positive outcomes from this entirely. However, for me, this is predominantly, this particular report, these particular proposals are about safety. And that's the brief we gave NZTA right at the beginning after the deaths a couple of years ago. And I'm a little bemused why some councillors would argue that this won't make it safer when everywhere else in the world separated cycle lanes do. I'm also sure what's so different about New Zealanders or Dunedinites, that we would somehow be at risk by being in a separated cycle lane. And I'm pleased that this is being, these proposals are being restricted to the one-way pier at the moment because we can look at the issue of safety. It will connect with the network as we develop it, a cycle network across the city. But ultimately, this, what we're talking about here is safety. And the loss of parking is a complete red herring. Roadways, pedestrian ways are for moving traffic along, whether the pedestrian traffic, whether vehicular traffic or whatever. You would not say we need a footpath to park cars on because we haven't got anywhere to put them if you wanted to have people moving along. You would not say we want to park cars here in such a way that trucks can't get through. Obviously, roadways are for movement. Parking is a bonus. And you work it out later on. But the main reason to have roadways, cycleways, pedestrian ways is to get things and people from one point to another. And to do that, they have to move. And they don't want to, and you shouldn't obstruct them. So I really support these recommendations. They will enhance the safety and the facility and the accessibility of our city, but as I say, mostly the safety. And I look forward to when we can link them up to the other developments in our cycle network. Councillor Noon.
I just want to reinforce a comment that you made, Your Worship, and I think it's a very important point, is that the solution for the one-way pier, whatever comes out to be after consultation, is a piece, an important piece of the puzzle, not the puddle, an important piece of the puzzle, to be able to connect the city from south to the north. And that to me is, it mustn't be overlooked because we heard from Mr Underwood, talked about the whole network approach, and I think that's particularly important. There is a desire for people living in the city that want to get from the north end to the south end on a bike. And eventually, we are going to have linkages all the way to South Dunedin and, you know, out towards Portsmouth Drive and the peninsula and all the rest of it. So the point I'm making is that this is a very important piece of the puzzle. Once we get it in place, we'll start working on the second bit of the puzzle.
Okay, I'm going to put the recommendations as they sit on the order paper. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No division, please.
Have a division. Didn't get carried in quickly enough, did I?
You tried.
I didn't.
Councillor Bizet.
Aye.
Councillor Brown.
Aye.
Councillor Collins.
No.
Councillor Hudson.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Noon.
Aye.
Councillor Stones.
Aye.
Councillor Stevenson.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Councillor Vandevus.
No.
Councillor Wetheram.
Aye.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Call.
Aye.
Can we move on to the... We'll move on to item 22, transport strategy. Councillor Wilson, would you like to move the minutes?
I'll move the minutes, please, which are item 22. Okay. Move the minutes. Yeah, move the minutes.
Second councillor Noon. Discussion councillor Vandevus.
Shall I just ask for one correction on the minutes, please, for historical purposes?
Yes.
Page two of the minutes, under Saddle Hill, Keith McFagin is referred to as a community board. Should be a community board.
Pig of a mistake to make, isn't it?
Yeah.
Right, councillor Vandevus, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, on page eight of the minutes, it says in the middle of the page there that the meeting was adjourned at 2:07 and reconvened on Friday the 13th of September. My understanding was that it wasn't adjourned at 2 o'clock. In fact, we were told that that was it and it was too late to do any more. And that subsequently, people changed their minds and decided it wasn't too late to have another meeting after all. And then it was reconvened on Friday the 13th. So can I have direction from governance on exactly what did happen? Because my distinct understanding was that it certainly wasn't adjourned prior to Friday the 13th and then reconvened.
I...
As the chair, I think you probably, I take it that the hearing panel made this call, so...
We were subject to some agreement by email that we thought we had left out. There was more changes than we had expected and we reconvened because we realised that the changes were more momentum than would be dealt with under a normal process for ticking off editorial matters.
So regardless of whether technically you adjourned, do you definitely reconvene?
We definitely reconvene. We realised that the changes, that we couldn't come to agreement by email and they were more substantial.
I don't, unless this is the reason councillor Vandevus...
The reason is that the meeting wasn't adjourned. It may have reconvened.
Do you have a suggestion as to what you would like to make as an alternative to adjourned? We'll see if that's acceptable.
The meeting was closed.
Well, it can't have been if it was reconvened.
That's just the problem.
Right. So we'll leave it at adjourned. That's easier.
No, because it wasn't. And I'll be voting against the addition of the... It's just simply not correct. The meeting was closed. They then subsequently decided to reconvene.
And I don't mind whichever way, whichever way the process is fine. It closed in order to deal with things by editorial. It reconvened. It doesn't apply whichever way. They're both allowable. I honestly can't remember.
They call it closed?
I'm happy it should be closed, but still...
Right, before it closed, we can reconvene. Right, now, if there's any further discussion, we're moving the minutes. Any further discussion? Now, if I put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. Right, now, the 22B. This is the strategy itself. I suggest that, would you like to move?
I'd like to move and talk to that motion if I get a second vote.
Yep, please do. Well, councillor Noon.
Thank you. I have to report back on the transportation strategy. We received 64 submissions. Sixty were neutral or positive, four were opposed or had comments of a change. We took over three and a half days of hearings and deliberations. We made substantial changes. And I note that the staff did some of those before as a result of the submissions and as we went through the hearings and deliberated. The timeframe has been very tight because of NZTA and ORC commitments and requirements as to meeting schedule. And yes, it would have been easier not to have done this, but we've had to continue through the process for the other, for the other parties and stakeholders' timeframes. It's been important and I think I'm not understood by everyone, that this has been a merger of several strategies into one, being cycling, being pedestrian and being transport. So now, and the biggest change to the front page is now that it's an integrated transportation, a transport strategy. I think it's really important to note that. That is why it now mentions cycling and pedestrians where it didn't used to before and possibly comes to some of the other issues that we're dealing with. But it certainly is the way to go forward. And in fact, as I drove round town before I came here today, I listened to a very good article on Catherine Ryan's show just before 12 that I recommend to anyone to listen to about how other cities are doing this and how it is a must-do. And I congratulate the staff for the leadership and the good practice that they're putting into place as was confirmed by NZTA in their submission and in their question time, that this is exactly what they'd be expecting and exactly what they, the format is exactly what they'd expect. In the changes that we've put in, there's one that ongoing consultation. None of the projects are set in stone. There will be an ongoing consultation and meeting with the financial strategy as well as we go through this. So it's just a methodology and a system really of how we go through things. I would like to thank the substantial number of submitters and the passion that they showed. On both sides of the fence, it was really good constructive debate led by the submitters. The willingness of staff to consider changes before the hearings and after and right throughout the deliberations and their answering of a number of questions. And I'd like to thank all the councillors for the constructive input. I thought it was a really good process going through. We didn't always agree, but we got through there and then through debate and discussion. And I really value that. That is why we have hearings panels. And I think we've come up with something which we should be rightly proud of. I note that the Tagu Chamber of Commerce have now, I think, sent a press release round which they are supportive of, they're supportive of the change we've put in, and they look forward to participating going forward. Thank you.
Sure. If I may, I'm a long-time believer that the two generations in life that I value probably most are the innocence and the innocence anyway and honesty of children and the wisdom and knowledge of the elderly. With that in mind, the latter in mind, is there going to be a chance, because there are one or two issues here that I'm not comfortable with, the professor has been here all afternoon, will I get a chance to talk with him or is he not going to be part of this discussion?
He's in here as a sub-sub.
But he was part of the...
He was a sub-sub.
What?
He was a sub-sub.
Sub-sub? Sorry. I thought he was part of the group.
No.
Okay.
Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. Just want to follow up on what a number of points that councillor Wilson has made. And first, I think acknowledging the contribution of the members on the panel. And thinking about this, when I read the report and thinking about the discussion today, I felt I should put myself in the shoes of a councillor that wasn't at the hearings and for them to understand the process we went through. And I think if you read everything in the paper and listened to what was said on the radio, you know, you'd probably be wondering what we were up to. But the reality was that, you know, we all come from different political spheres and we're a mismatch of, you know, we have different outlooks in life. And I think simply because the transportation strategy and as councillor Wilson has alluded to, that it encompasses parking, pedestrian, cyclists, all into one strategy, it meant that we were, we were dealing with a number of, I wouldn't say complex issues, but there were issues that create some tension in the community. And to be fair, we worked our way through, as you do. And some of us around the table had some wins and some losses, but we've got a report that we endorsed and we've now got it in front of council and hopefully that you'll see fit to endorse it, endorse the strategy. One of the things we did make, were made very clear from staff in particular, was that we needed to be talking the same, or not necessarily the same, but a consistent language with central government policy. And in the roading area, you've got the Land Transport Management Act, which essentially governs everything in the land transport area. And underneath that, you've got the government policy statements which talk about improving safety. And they've got a programme called Safer Journeys 2020, and that's all about reducing the road toll and that's, you know, and the trauma associated and costs associated with the road toll that we have. And that includes serious injuries as well. But they also talk about productivity and growth, the importance of roads for creating prosperity in our communities. And the third aspect, which has now escaped me, of course, value for money and affordability. So that's what the government are saying. Then if you look at the documents that are produced by the regional land transport, sorry, the Taga Regional Council, but via the regional land transport strategy, they say similar things. And then if you look at what we've produced here, we talk about safety, we talk about affordability and value for money. So those themes run through the document. We also talk about ensuring that there are... We also talk about ensuring that there are efficient freight movements to ensure that economic growth can occur. So the point I'm trying to make, the themes in this transportation strategy are consistent with other documents that are important because they dovetail into our document, which means that being able to look at the outcomes in the document where you've got a programme of activity and work, they can't be achieved unless we are talking a similar language to those documents at a higher level. I also take the point about collaboration and working with our partners, it was clear, NZTA made it very clear that they're obviously a key driver to what we can and can't do in terms of the funding envelope going forward to try and deal with some of the projects. We also had a submission from the Taga Regional Council, we made it clear that they wanted to work with us in collaboration, obviously to look at passenger transport services in the future, I'm not sure how that'll pan out, we'll just wait and see over the next few months, post-election or whatever. And we also had submissions, as councillor Collins has alluded to, from the Chamber of Commerce via Professor Harris. And I think the willingness for groups such as that, and the reality is that the ORC and NZTA are just doing their job, but the chamber and spokes and various other groups are willing to work with us to resolve some of these challenges that we've got looking forward. Within the document, there is areas of focus and then obviously to be able to deliver those outcomes, it's all about affordability. And I think it's very important, and councillor Brown's not here, but councillor Thompson is deputy chair of finance, we've talked earlier about the financial strategy and the commitment over the next ten years to reduce seventy-odd million off our debt, or the city's debt. It is all about making sure that we can afford to do those projects and the NZTA have quite a robust business case approach which they've introduced, which means to justify an investment in the roading network, you've got to go through a number of hoops and hurdles. And also they've got another, to actually, before you even get to an investment, you've got to go through what they call an investment logic mapping exercise, which identifies challenges and benefits before you even consider the investment. So it's quite a rigorous process. So I just wanted to reassure my colleagues that there is a number of projects in the back of this document under the programme, but there's a lot of hoops and hurdles that those programmes will have to go through before they're approved.
Councillor Bezette.
Well, some of the comments that councillor Newt made are reassuring, but I do have a concern about the consultation. And I guess my question, we're on a question, we're not debating at this stage.
You've spoken before.
No, I know.
We're in debate.
Oh, you're in debate? Oh, well.
You move to the centre.
Okay. Well, I was going to ask some questions with regards to the consultation, because I am concerned about that. And I know in the minutes, the chamber believed there could be some improvement made to the transportation strategy and I just wondered if we are to do or have any intention of actually working with the chamber. For example, one of the things that I was concerned about was the economic development strategy. Now, in that, as one of the seven major issues with regards to our strategy was the connectivity. And that looked at the quality of the links within the city. Now, I would have thought that we would have, with our consultation, talked to the partners that we had with our economic development strategy, because I'm sure that it would be of interest to them, but there appears to be no consultation with them whatsoever. And in my view, that's wrong. We haven't talked with the economic development strategy partners, or am I wrong in that? You have?
Look, they were at the hearing, the chamber, they have been...
I'm not talking about the chamber, I'm talking about the other partners.
The other partners have been involved in the Wykoff project, is my understanding, and so the university...
Like the university and polytech, the employers association?
And all of that has fed into the transportation strategy.
Right. Okay, well, the other thing, when I asked Sarah to send me out the list of the submitters and there's sixty odd of them, I looked through them and there's a lot of them really don't really relate to the strategy itself. Now, I don't have a problem with that so much because I welcome the fact that they've taken the time to put in a submission and that's good. But there's some key players that are not there. Major freight movers around the city haven't submitted. And once again, I'm just concerned that if we put out a strategy where we haven't consulted with what I see to be major players, then we are going to set ourselves up for criticism that I think would be well-founded. So I just, councillor Wilson mentioned when, with her opening remarks, that there was going to be further consultation. And if that is the case, I'd like her to elaborate on that somewhat more because I don't think there has been sufficient consultation.
I'm just going to ask councillor Bezette to see why it is council's fault if organisations who have an interest in something don't bother to submit.
Well, that was just the point I made.
Anyone's allowed to.
Yes, I understand where you're coming from, but it was the point I made at the debate we had with regards to the cycleways and comes back to the parking. If you, there is a belief within this council that we just have to advertise if we're going to do something and there's an expectation that people will come along and submit, we have got to go to people and say, look, this is important, we want your views and we want you to submit. Now, I know that happens from time to time, but it's really important with this particular one. And you can sit down councillor Wilson, you'll get your turn in a moment. It's really important with this one for people to be shoulder tapped and ask for their views. For example, you know, the AA not submitting on the previous item, I think is wrong, we should go back to them. But there's others in here, with getting back to this particular topic, there's others in here that should be submitting and that haven't.
No, look, I don't think that needs a response because short of subpoenaing people, I'm not sure how on earth you would satisfy your requirement. Anyway, it's not a criticism of council.
Well, it doesn't need a response, that's just my view, that's all I'm saying.
Do what you like. Councillor Davis.
I entirely agree with councillor Bezette. We have a consultation process which has fed into this transportation plan and what has fed into it has been cyclists, more cyclists and a whole lot more cyclists. And the ninety-odd percent of travel journeys done in the city that are performed by motoring trucks or cars have had no groups feeding into this at all. What it suggests is that we have a problem in terms of how this is consulted, we may have a problem with trust in that the AA and other groups simply don't believe it's worth their while to even try and submit because they don't believe in the process. I think that, I don't have an answer for it, but I think that councillor Bezette raises a valid point and we should look at it. To have a transportation strategy that had no one feeding into it, that represents a group of motorised, modern transportation is a worry. A bigger worry for me, being part of this committee, was having to look at a transportation strategy which was in denial of technology. In all of history, all transportation changes have invariably been driven by new technology. No transportation changes were ever driven by transportation strategies, it was always new technology. The car is a horseless carriage. Then it went to steam-powered, oil-powered, gas-powered, now we have electric. None of the new technologies were available in the original draft and I had to fight long, hard and ugly to get even a mention of modern technology brought into this strategy. I'm very pleased that there have been a number of substantial changes made to the draft and I think that some of them are actually reasonably positive. However, the whole thrust of this transportation strategy is built on a, let's forget about anything motorised and go back to pedal power. The fundamental assumptions are the ones that I have the most difficulty with in this strategy and I believe will guarantee that this strategy will simply gather dust in the future as technology overtakes it. I draw your attention to assumption number one, which says, amongst other things, there is however, no clear indication that a significant proportion of the needness population may be able to afford or access these alternative fuels. And it talks about one of these fuels as being electricity. Now, this to me is patently false and ridiculous. Electricity would be the most easily accessed fuel that any of us have. And if you look at this range of electric cars here, all currently available in Europe, America and in China now, it has this to say, this is the New Economy Autumn 2012 Journal. It says, although the price of battery-powered cars is substantially higher than conventional powered vehicles, as it is for hybrids, the advantages are significant. Low-wearing electric motors require little maintenance, soon recoup the initial investment because they're longer life, and at two cents a mile or less, running costs are about six times less than those of the ordinary petrol-powered cars. This is current technology which you can buy on the streets in most parts of the world today and yet our strategy claims that these fuels are simply not accessible or cheap, they're six times cheaper. If you go to assumption number two, it basically says that road safety needs to improve, it's all about safety. And who can argue with safety? Well, I'm going to. Because what this strategy says is it wants to reduce car journeys from eighty-four percent down to sixty percent and replace it with alternative modes. What that is going to do is reduce the safe eighty-four percent of journeys that we now have in vehicles where you're not going to get killed and you're not going to get injured, down to sixty percent. It's going to reduce safety. So assumption number two is wrong as well. What this strategy needs is more work, the new incoming council needs to do it and it needs a new assumption number one, which talks about new technology and how that is already driving our transportation strategy.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, Bishop. Look, words like, let's forget about anything motorised and go back to pedal power, there are many words that I could use to describe a sentence like that, but I don't think many of them would be polite and certainly they wouldn't come anywhere near describing this strategy. And I think what has been unfortunate about the manner in which this strategy has been reported through the media and, and I appreciate that it has been driven to a degree by the commentary that has been made around it, I just think it's completely unfounded to talk about this strategy as being an anti-car strategy. It is not an anti-car strategy. It is a pro-choice strategy, it is a pro-safety strategy, it is a pro-resilience strategy, it's a pro-spatial plan strategy. And it supports, on top of all of that, it supports freight movement through our city. So I just think that comments that have been made, which I'm tempted to call history on it, but I won't, I just think that we, it's so far from those that it's, I think it's unacceptable to use words like that to describe our strategy. What I do think this strategy does really well, and I'm going to focus on what I think it does do really well, because I think there are so many things that we can feel really proud of in this strategy, is the links that it makes between things like land use and transport, as well as between modes, which is what councillor Wilson has referred to. It talks about the resilience of our rural settlements in a way that I think is quite different and quite new for a transport strategy. It makes references to our energy plan and to the work and the opportunities that we can work on through that energy plan, which I think are really exciting. And it plots a really careful path between the trade-offs that we need to make in some areas where we do have conflicts on our system. For example, the one-way system, which we've spent some of this afternoon's meeting discussing, staff have thought really carefully about some of the ways that we might not only support the freight movement, which needs to go through there to reach our port to support our economy, but also how we can support the eight hundred million dollar industry that is the university, which is also equally important and which requires safe movement of people through that space, most of whom are travelling in a non-motorised way. Some reference has been made to the mode share target and I think it's important that we just think about the context of that, for that. In the three years I've been on council, one of the overwhelming things that we've had submissions on, or in fact, two of the overwhelming things that we've repeatedly have had submissions on, are public transport, even though we can't do anything about it currently, and cycling. And, you know, the fact that a whole load of people turned up to the transport strategy talking about mode share, to suggest that none of those guys drove cars, I think is patently ridiculous. I think that there are a whole load of people, as demonstrated by our recent people's panel survey, fifty-six percent of people would like to use either bikes, buses or their feet to get around our city for the major trips that they do every day. Currently, only twenty-three percent of those people do so. So even if we reach our forty percent mode share target by 2024, we're not even going to be meeting that demand, that latent demand for those alternative modes. And I think that that is worth considering. With reference to fuels and technologies, we do identify in this strategy that this is an area that we need to keep our eye on the ball on, that this is an area where there will be changes and reasonably rapid changes. However, this strategy will be reviewed within five years. So what we have acknowledged in this strategy is it's unlikely that a high percentage or a significant proportion of Deneidites will have access to either those fuels or the technologies that are required to utilise those fuels for transportation within the term before that review. So I endorse this strategy, I think staff have done an awesome job, I think the committee has gone through a really neat process, I think it's an eminently sensible and well-rounded strategy, it's future-focused and it doesn't put all of our eggs in the basket of one sort of think big strategy, it's looking much more smartly than that.
Councillor Stevenson.
Yeah, this was hard work going through this, mildly, but we listened to all the submissions and then we had a committee that made a really interesting political spectrum. We had right through, we had from the car needs, and they are important, car parking needs, through to environmental future, we had both ends of the spectrum. And then we used that balance to look through all of those submissions and try and get more built in. And I think that's the beauty of having mixture in your politics and you need to have the whole mixture. And I think it's really important when you choose your panels that you do have a mixture there. Doesn't make it easy, but it does make it balanced. And so I congratulate all my members for making it as balanced a process as it could possibly be.
Councillor Staines.
As most of you around the table will know, I have a particular focus on economic development for this city. And it seems to me when I read this transportation strategy, it doesn't get in the way of economic development, it creates a platform from which the city can grow. It seems that in reading it, some people get a completely different meaning to that that I get. I think the hearings committee have made some good changes. I noticed there are a lot of changes that are pure wordsmithing and maybe that's fine if it improves the understanding. I personally think that an integrated transportation strategy is an important tool for this city. To have a transportation strategy that purely focuses on the motorists on the road and the transport on the road leaves a lot of other users out of the equation. So integrating it recognises that there are a lot more users. Secondly, the opportunities that have come from our previous item on separated cycleways means that potentially we will see less private motor vehicles on the key arterial road. And that can only help with speeding up the process of getting goods to market down our transport routes. It's time for us as a city to stop looking at the past. We have to look towards the future, we have to look at how do we make our city more livable? How do we make our city's economy grow? How do we cater for the needs of a variety of our citizens? The world is moving on, we need to move on and not live in the past. I accept the comments that councillor Anderson has made. I accept the comments that councillor Vandervass has made on changing our vehicles towards electric, and I suspect we will see a lot more of them. But I also suspect we will see a lot more electric bicycles around the city, something that councillor Vandervass has been quite passionate about. And we have to recognise that they are just as vulnerable on our roads as cyclists. So I think having a strategy that is more balanced, that takes into account all of the needs of all of the users is a good direction for the city to take. And I accept that as some of the actions that come out of this strategy start to be worked on, there will need to be a lot more interaction with the users. And I support the chambers' involvement there and also the AA as representing business and car users being part of that process.
Councillor Wilson, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
So what of this, Bishop, is just a couple of matters. I just want to flag that I believe that the consultation process, as it has been for all strategies, was consistent and good. There were meetings out in the community, there were, before the strategy was even appeared, there was been considerable amount of work on the Wykoff and leading into the strategy being developed from a lot of the people that have been expressed as concerns for not submitting. And I note that there was a vast number of submissions in support. I am very sure that that has been well consulted on, and the changes that came through from the process showed a very wide spectrum of people had read and supported the strategy. I suggest that the committee did do a lot of work in changing the wordsmithing, including technology, and that's all been included. I don't know that it was particularly hard to walk by, certainly it was accepted and we moved on. I would like to, I'd like to give a score to Chris Morrison possibly, but I'm not going to, for reporting on it. But what I do want to say is that I welcome what ODT have done in highlighting the interest in this, because I've had a chance to read some of the blogs on this and on the cycle lanes, and I've learnt even more. And I think that what has been great about this is the debates outside of the actual hearings and the comments that have come through. And I think what I love is that people are passionate about it. What I want is people to understand transportation and all modes and how they can change better. I think there's a lot of work we can do on that, but that's part of the consultation going forward, that every project will still be consulted on. So I'm very comfortable with the process and very happy to support it.
I'm going to put the recommendation, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, recorded, please.
With that, Pam, councillor Vandervass. Right, we are now reached the end of the public part, so I'll move from the chair, that the public be excluded from the following parts as on the wallpaper of the proceedings of this meeting, items twenty-three to twenty-six. Councillor Staines, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. I think we'll have a five-minute adjournment.